Hi, I'd like to welcome everybody here and open the meeting of the Planning Board for Thursday, July 18th, 2024 in the Town Hall Meeting Room, 7:00 PM. This meeting has been posted in accordance with law. The meeting is being recorded and broadcast on HW Cam. Thank you so much to the people who are doing that technical work. This is a work session on the details of the overlay zoning bylaw amendment to comply with Massachusetts Chapter 40A, Section 3A. I want to tell you who's here, Margaret Hoffman, our staff, Robin Stein, Town Council, and then the Planning Board members, you can read our placards. I'd like to offer a brief summary of the process that we've undertaken so far and how tonight's meeting fits into that, in case people who are in the room are not aware. We've been considering questions about how best to address the requirements of Section 3A for over a year in our open meetings. Some of those meetings were supported by a consultant who did some analysis for us. We presented a general plan for compliance to the public forum held at Bueker School on June 5th, and we heard then from members of the public. We have come up with some ideas that we think allow the town to comply with the minimum damage or minimum, I don't know, development in town, the minimum amount of compliance that preserves our ability to move forward. We presented the general plan, as I mentioned, and tonight we're working on the details of the overlay district. Once we have completed consideration of the details, we will hold a public hearing on the overlay district zoning bylaw amendment. That public hearing is likely to be in September. After that point, the Board will vote on the zoning overlay district. There won't be any voting by the Board tonight. Because this is a zoning bylaw amendment, by law it must be voted on by the whole town at a town meeting. The town has scheduled a special town meeting for November 16th, 2024, so the town can vote. There will not be any planning, I just repeat, not any planning board votes up or down tonight, and tonight's public statement period is not a "public hearing" on the amendment. We set aside 10 minutes at the beginning of the meeting to take statements from people in attendance. Again, not a "public hearing," which has a special legal meaning, it's a special comment opportunity for people who would like to speak. We're not technically required to take any public comment at a work session like this, but we realize how much interest there is in this matter. We would ask you, please, to limit your statement tonight to a minute in length to give others in the room the opportunity to speak, and we will close out the public statement period if we can at the 10-minute mark. Margaret will time speakers. And please remember, there'll be another opportunity to offer public comment on the bylaw at the legally required public hearing in September, and we will continue to work on this at our meetings, and you're welcome to attend those. Once the 10 minutes are up tonight, we're going to go into our work session, and that was going to be a conversation among the Board's members and with staff and Town Council about technical details of the overlay zone. You are more than welcome to stay and observe our work. No problem at all with that, of course, but we will not be responding to public input during the work session. So I appreciate your understanding on this and working with us, and with that, I think we can move into the 10 minutes for public statements.
Can I just ask a question?
Would you stand at the microphone, please, so that HW Cam can pick it up? That way, everybody listening at home can hear you.
I guess first...
And sorry, for anybody who speaks tonight, when you get to the podium, please identify yourself and your address.
I was going to do that.
Yeah, and Margaret, are you timing?
I will.
What is she doing?
She's timing your statement.
One minute.
Okay, before I get to my statement, I just wanted to, which I thought I could do from my chair, but I wanted to ask you a point of clarification. When you say, oh, Edward Flynn, Two Siis Lane, Flynn is F-L-Y-N-N.
Thank you.
When you say that you develop a plan that you feel confident, I think may not have been the word, but good about, for minimal impact from the impact of 3A, does that mean that you have, that you have come up with a plan that includes, is it, I have it down on my hand because I'm getting old and I forget things?
Me too.
365 units and 24 acres of property that's been designated?
Oh, we're not taking, we're not going to do a back and forth tonight.
I just have a point of clarification. You said that you had come up with a plan.
We have done what we can to comply with the 3A at the best, to the best of our ability, to make sure that the town has done what it needs to do, the best it can do.
Okay.
In our opinion. You are welcome to come to the public hearing and look at the, you know...
Preserving my time, then.
Okay, I'll let you continue, and if you would take your minute, that would be helpful.
Sorry.
Thank you for your comment.
No, no, well, it's really a kind of a question. I guess the answer then is yes. You have tried to locate somewhere in the town 365 units and 24 acres for, because that's what, that's what the state wants. So I'm assuming that's what you mean when you said you're doing what the state wants. And I just want to say, my wife wrote this down for me, which I very much appreciate. I live at Two Siis Lane, as I stated earlier, and I am vehemently opposed to 3A. 3A is not a zoning mandate, it's a housing mandate, requiring Wenham to zone for the building of a minimum of 365 family units with no minimum number of occupants. Doing so will completely overwhelm our infrastructure and tax us all out of our homes. It is the Planning Board's duty to protect Wenham residents from 3A. I do feel very strongly about this. The taxes in this town, as everyone knows, is pretty, it's the highest in the area. Taking on this many people adds to the amount of money we're going to pay for everything, including fire, police, schools especially, which is 70% of our town budget. We're talking about a massive influx potentially of students, which is going to either do one of two things.
One minute. I think we've hit one minute.
Cost a lot more money per student, or we're going to have overcrowded classes with the teachers that we currently have. So I would urge you, under the guise of living under the Home Rule as an amendment to the Massachusetts Constitution, and the most basic part to me of the Home Rule is local zoning, and to give up local zoning, I can't understand why you guys would do it. But anyway, thank you very much, Madam Chair, thank you for your time, and thank you all for your, I know you guys do a lot of time in your lives to the town, and I want you to know I appreciate it very much.
Well, thank you for your comments. We always appreciate people's input. We encourage your participation in the public hearing and the town meeting. Does anyone else want to speak?
Hi, Angus West from Seven Walnut Road, Wenham. I want to reiterate our thanks for you as volunteers for the effort you're making to try to minimize the impact of a law which I think goes much too far, and I hope by the time we have the full hearing, you will have developed a better answer to the alternatives if we do not follow through with the state mandate. What are the true costs to the town if we do not follow the mandate? I'm very concerned that, as just mentioned, that the town infrastructure, especially water, which I'm already being, we're already being rationed, sewer, traffic, parking, and most notably the school, that honoring this will be vastly more expensive than the sanctions that we may impose and the locks of supposed state housing-related expenditures. So I do appreciate that you have tried to minimize this with the two lots, but I think there are a lot of people who are going to vote against this, and you should be aware of that, so I hope you're prepared to answer that very fundamental question. What are the real cost benefits if we reject it?
Thanks again for your comment. We appreciate every comment we get and encourage you to vote at town meeting. Come out for the public hearing as well.
Elizabeth McCurick, Six Walnut Lane in Wenham, and I just want to say that I, too, am vehemently opposed to 3A and have the same question, I think you phrased it very well, Angus, what is, what is the cost benefit? We are a town that is, like, it would be crazy for us to give up our ability to zone the way we feel makes sense for, for us as residents, and will completely change the feel of our town. I happen to live as an immediate abutter to the triangle space right between where housing would be between us and the shopping center, completely would change the equity we've built in our house. We have been fighting, we're not fighting, respecting the laws around wetlands and not expanded our house because we couldn't, had to spend crazy amounts of money to have our septic system comply with that, and I'm just concerned, we give up zoning and all of a sudden, all of that stuff just disappears. So I'm concerned about the taxes, the schools, the wetlands, and losing, losing our ability to make decisions that make sense.
Thanks much.
Thank you for your time and volunteerism, all of you.
Thanks for your comments.
Andrew Poston, Eight Walnut Lane. I live next to Augie and Elizabeth. I am strongly opposed to 3A. I oppose it for many reasons, but obviously the impact of the infrastructure, taxes, the wetlands next to our property. And I moved to Wenham to raise my now, actually, two-year-old daughter, who turned two today. My wife is due two days ago, so I just wonder what it's going to mean for the property that we bought to raise my family, what that's going to look like when they put up, you know, 30 or 40 units right next door to my house. So I'd like you guys to please consider this. Thank you.
Thanks for your comment.
Where are we on the 10 minutes?
South West 20 Puritan Road.
Four right now.
I think you guys all know how I feel about this, so I'm not going to go over ad nauseam about the character of the town and what it's going to do for the taxes. What I'm going to tell you is the zoning, the zoning is the safety valve for this town. You change the zoning, there's going to be buyer's remorse. You can't reverse it. There is a webinar that was put out by the state. It's called Twosland Strategies for Explaining MBTA Community Zoning to People Like You. And in that video, and I want you to go see it, it's on YouTube, it says, "De-emphasize development, emphasize the zoning, present it as a zoning exercise." That's baloney, okay? Number one, you change the zoning, you're done. It's over. Game's over. Polty Homes, I know for a fact, has already been in discussions with Wenham and Hamilton. They're one of the largest affordable developers, and they're licking their chops. They're going to descend on this town like my Aunt Margey at a buffet table, okay? And there will be no stopping it. If you want to talk about what it's going to do for that school...
You've hit a minute. Please close. Thank you.
Okay, large schools, you can be sure that the state will fill it, and they'll fill it beyond capacity. We don't need that school. We should be working on, with the schools that we have and improving that.
Please, please limit your comments to the table so that other people have a chance to speak if they want to.
Okay, so that's basically it. Don't change the zoning. You'll regret it.
Thank you for your comment. I appreciate it. Does anyone else want to speak? Got another five minutes.
Elizabeth West, Seven Walnut Road. I'm also opposed to it. I wondered, it feels as if the world has changed since Maura Healey created this mandate, and the ridership of the train has gone down significantly, and yet they're going to be building these structures right over the train station. And I also wonder why we didn't try to work with Hamilton when we have so much in common with them. We're going to, those of us in the downtown area will have back-to-back development. We'll have Hamiltons on us and Wenham, so we share schools, we share library, we share the train station. We should have looked into that. We should look into it. Also, septic and sewer.
Just to be clear, I just want to interrupt for one second and tell you that we are meeting with the Hamilton Planning Board at our next meeting.
I mean, it would really make sense.
Right, and we, just to, just to be, yeah, August, August 8th, actually, and to be clear, it was a Charlie Baker mandate.
Charlie Baker mandate, it doesn't matter to me.
Okay, just to be clear for the people in the room.
But the mandate is, is, should be...
What does that mean, is it Charlie Baker?
He signed it. It was his idea.
I know that he was. Why would you say that?
Because I'm just correcting the record.
But now we have to deal with Maura, right? But...
Because there was, hold on, hold on, excuse me, there was a comment that it was a Maura Healey mandate, and it was just a clarification, that's all.
It's a factual statement.
I apologize.
Yeah.
Thank you, please don't interrupt. I'm sorry, Ms. West, keep going.
Also, we've spent a fortune on our tiny place to keep our septic system going, and I don't, I don't see any in plan for, are we going to go to a sewer system? That's huge. So I think we should stop this and ponder it. It's our right. We should. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Sorry to interrupt you. Does anyone else like to speak?
Are we taking two comments from each household? That's okay.
Augie McCurick, Six Walnut Lane, also in a butter to the triangle, proposed triangle lot. I just think that the town should basically say no to the state on this. We don't need 3A zoning in Wenham, and we really don't need the state. I mean, I've lived at Six Walnut Lane for 32 years. We've never gotten a ton of help from the state, minimum help from the state. We're a donor town, so is Hamilton. We don't need the state to bully us. Let's stand up to bullies.
Thank you for your comment. Happy to have everybody here at the public hearing when we get to the details, and of course, come to town meeting. Yes.
Is there time now?
I believe there is, yes.
Before your comment, can I just ask, how many people here in the room would like to make a comment who haven't made a comment so far? Anybody beyond the person at the podium?
That's why I stood up.
Okay.
Those precious moments, I really wasn't intending to speak.
Not a waste at all, we just want to make sure everyone...
I was just seeing if we might need additional time, that's all.
I'm Sandy Belloc-Fippen. I live at 10 Dodges Row. I've been a longtime resident in Wenham, and I, I'm, I must say, I am opposed to this, this law. I think it's being forced down the state's throat, and they're overstepping their authority. My husband, who couldn't be here this evening, reviewed Milton's counter suit, which raised a number of very valid points about the housing authority that is in charge of administering this, this new law. And one of the things that they've tried to do to Milton is they, they're suggesting that they have to use 25% of their land area for this type of multifamily housing, which is way of, way out of bounds, and I think it's going to fall apart in court. So I would suggest that the Planning Board, the zoning board, the town of Wenham, wait, see what happens with all these other arguments going on with the state, and not rush into presenting a plan, but this whole thing may fall apart before we have, we have that on the books. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for your comment. Again, there will be a public hearing, formal public hearing. There's another meeting in August when we're meeting with the Hamilton Planning Board, and the public hearing on the bylaw will be in September. There will be a town meeting on November 16th to consider this formally and for the entire town to vote. Thanks. With that, I think, if there's no one else who wants to speak...
I would just like to apologize to you again for mishearing what she said and being so direct with you, so I apologize.
Well, thank you, it's fine. I, oh, we have one more, okay. Sorry, I thought we were done.
Nancy Flynn, Two Siis Lane. It's my understanding there are no economic projections of these projects, and no one knows the true cost or the taxes, and I think that's, you know, can you count how many people, the projection of, of, of the economic impact on our towns? And like I said, no one knows the true cost with their, with the taxes, and I think that that's a, that's a huge factor, and I'm going to reiterate what Sal said earlier, is we have this, we should not give in and change our zoning laws. We need to say no to this.
Anyone else? If that's the case, I think we're going to close the 10-minute comment period, which went over a little bit, but not too much, and start looking at the copy of the draft bylaw which you have. And of course, you're welcome to stay and listen to the deliberations if you would like to.
Is this also being transmitted live on HW Cam?
Yeah, you can go home and watch on HW Cam. It's probably cooler, I must say. So we have a draft with a variety of different details in it. How do you want to go through this, folks? Do we want to go section by section? Do we want to raise issues of, you know, how do you, how would you like to do, to do this? Do you have a presentation to make, Margaret?
No, what I anticipated was, you have the draft in front of you. I think you've all read it. I've gotten comments from Rick, which are in your packet. We can go through Rick's comments first, or if any of you have actual comments of the language.
And the comments from Rick, how do I find them? I see...
They're in black and white at the back.
The back, okay.
They're in black and white, but I tried to highlight and make his comments actually larger.
So I have a suggestion.
You see how they're like, they're gray and bold?
Yep, I got it. So I suggest that if we have general comments that we address those first and then work section by section instead of person by person, because...
Yeah, I think section by section.
Let's try to be as efficient as we can as we go through this.
To that point, are we calling this the multifamily overlay district, or is it the multifamily slash mixed-use overlay district?
You can call it either one.
I'm just wondering, because it, it allows for mixed uses.
We haven't fully decided whether mixed use is going to be allowed. I mean, it's in here.
Maybe that's the first question, is do we want to continue with it?
Do you want to name it multifamily overlay district?
I would go with multifamily overlay district, but that's mine.
Is that because the state law requires that, or is there a...
No, it's, well, personally, for me, it's because I have a question about whether we're going to call, we're going to, I think we want to allow mixed use, but the way this is drafted, it, it, it frames it as mixed use by right, which I'm not sure we want to do that.
That was my second question.
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
And since that terminology just came up, can I ask a question? It says "as of right" in some places, and "by right," and I think, I think "by right" is defined in the bylaw already, or at least, I thought I saw, yeah, the bottom of page one, it says "by right."
Right.
I think they're the same thing.
I know, but we should be consistent.
But we should be consistent in our language.
So should we go with "by right," or, I would suggest we go with "by right," since it's already there, and we just use "by right."
Yeah, otherwise, we're going to have to go through, and anywhere it appears, we're going to have to change it. So I would go with what we already have.
And I'll just note that I gave this an initial kind of MBTA communities and general zoning read.
Yep.
It's going to need one more real good read once you guys finish making your decisions, because as you change one thing, it changes other things, and so, you know, I'm anticipating, you know, for example, we went through and made sure we added it, we're adding it to the general district section of the bylaw, or adding it to the principal use section, you know, like, the kind of things that synthesize it with the whole bylaw, but it's my expectation that once kind of all the policy decisions and technical changes are done, we're going to give it one more good, comprehensive. I always like to read things from the perspective of if I was an applicant and I walked in the door, would I be able to pick this up and read it and use it and understand?
And know what it meant, yes.
I'd like to suggest that we try to work on substance and worry about wordsmithing at another time, because I know we can get caught into that, but if we can plow through what our concepts are and what our objections are or needs to put in there, then I think we could have another meeting where we go through and wordsmith it to satisfaction.
However you guys want to do it, it's fine with me. Just to your question, the only thing that I wanted to mention is that in the 3A guidelines, the phrase that's used is "as of right," and so we generally do recommend if the state's using a term, you guys use the same term, so, that's all I'll say.
Okay, so then, should we amend our definition "by right" to "as of right"? I don't care what it is, as long as it's consistent.
Yeah, no, I'm just, I'm just noting their guidelines use the phrase "as of right."
Okay, that's a good flag.
What do you think, do you want to change it all to "as of right" to match the state's?
Yes.
Yes.
Unless, unless, yes.
Council has a reason why.
That's the easiest thing to do.
Okay. Any other large policy questions? I thought that, you know, the question about whether mixed use is "as of right" or requires some kind of additional permit is a good one. I had that same question.
Sorry, can I just, I don't want to belabor this, can I just go back to one thing real quick, though, what you're talking about?
Yep.
So in 25542 of your principal uses, which is in here, there's an existing A...
It says "as of right."
There's existing A, which is "by right," that's already in your bylaw, right?
Right, correct.
So then, when you go into the actual MBTA zoning section in here, there's a different definition that's "as of right," and it's a total policy decision for you if you want there to be a definition of "as of right" that meets the guidelines, that just applies to MBTA zoning. So for example, on page one of this, it includes your existing definition of "by right," but then when you go on to page three, it has just the MBTA stuff, and then it has the "as of right" definition, which comes from the state guidelines, and that's MBTA-specific. So I don't want you to inadvertently change the general term "by right" in your bylaw if you don't mean to, that's all.
Well, interestingly enough, if you read the "by right" definition, it says "as of right." Yes. So maybe this is just...
Maybe you just leave that alone, and then you let the overlay be the overlay.
Yeah.
So, I'm all on board with Rick's point, I just wanted you to know that there, there were two different things, that's all.
Right. Okay, large policy issues, just to put them out there in the beginning. Right. Okay. Large policy issues. Just to put them out there in the beginning. No other large policy issues.
I already raised mine, which was the mixed use.
Can we require a special permit or anything for mixed use portion of it?
Yeah, so the 3A just requires you to have the as of right multifamily.
Right.
And it's a question for you if you want mixed use at all. You're allowed to have mixed use. And if you want it by right or by special permit.
Right, and you probably need to use your microphone so they can pick it up. There you go. Just because people have left, I'm going home. But we can provide, we can provide that if mixed use is included, it requires a special permit. Does that, but if it's, I'm still not clear, that would just pertain to the mixed use part of the development, right?
Yeah, so you could say multifamily housing is allowed as of right in this overlay district. Mixed use housing is allowed in this district by special permit, and you would have standards for issuing that.
Mixed use development.
Yes. Yeah, the same thing as mixed use.
Yeah, you said mixed use housing.
Sorry, mixed use development. Yeah, sorry.
No, no, it's all right. I want to make sure I understood. Okay, so if there aren't any big policy questions, can we just go through section by section and talk about the details here and people's comments?
I have a question.
Okay. Use your mic, please. Mr. Anderson.
Can we put in a poison provision? That if the SJC sides with Milton and agrees that there was insufficient authority in the guidelines or the laws otherwise struck down, that the zoning bylaw can automatically vanish into thin air?
No. No, I don't think you can do that. I mean, you can keep in mind that if it hasn't been used yet and there is a court decision that says that you don't have to have it, you can go back and amend the bylaw and take it out, and nobody will have rights under it because they haven't used it yet. You know, I can think about, I don't want to say yes or no now. I mean, sometimes we see bylaws that come in that have initial limited time periods that have to be renewed in a normal zoning sense. Well, in a normal zoning sense, they'll say, you know, this is a trial period, you know, we're going to, like, some towns when they started with outdoor dining, it was like, you know, we're going to do this for two years, we're going to see how it works kind of thing. I don't know that EO HLC, though, will find you to be in compliance if you put something like that in. So it's not a question I've had. It's something I can think about. Talked to a couple of my colleagues who are also doing a lot of the MBTA work in the offices, a handful of us. But no, I don't see how you can put something in that just annuls it automatically. And I think if you did.
It'd be good to have that answer.
Yeah, we can look at that.
What's the timing on the, I'm sorry, what's the timing on the Milton decision?
Oh, it's litigation.
No, I know, but I have no way.
It's going to be quick, though.
Yes. I'm trying to remember what the deadline for a Miki brief is. It's in the fall, I think, so.
So the decision in the spring? I'm just thinking, if we went to special town meeting in November and it passed, just say, and then the decision came down before the warrant for the regular town meeting, could we then, I mean, how quickly could we act?
Well, you can have a special town meeting anytime you want.
What is on the docket? Is it a motion to dismiss? Is it a motion for judgment on the pleadings? Do you know?
There's none of that on. I checked the docket today.
So what, I mean.
There's, it's a briefing schedule. I mean.
For the merits?
Well, no, that's a good point. So I think it's on the merits. I mean, I'm not, I'm not an SJC guy, but they're teeing it up like almost a summary judgment.
Yeah, they're taking a Miki filings on.
It's an appeal, so.
It's not.
No, it's not. It's, no, it's not. So what it is, is the AGU sued Milton to comply with the statute.
Yeah.
And it went up to.
Milton counterclaimed.
And they filed it directly with the SJC, who did take the case.
And they reserved it to full panel.
That's why I said the SJC, because they took it directly. They do have concurrent jurisdiction. They took it directly. And they're soliciting, you know, friends of the court briefs with a fall briefing schedule.
Could I ask a question?
Sure.
Hold on one second. So we should know the answer to this by our next meeting?
If, yeah. I mean, I'll get your comments back on that by the eighth. You mean on the eighth, right?
Yes.
And the question that you want the answer to is not when we'll have an answer.
No, no, it's David's question.
We can figure it out too by looking at the docket, but I think we should have an answer for our public meeting for everybody.
Yeah, no, I'll.
Mr. Woodland.
So right now, we're in total compliance. We've done everything, the steps we need to do.
Correct.
The only thing, by the end of the year, if we don't pass or not pass this, we then fall out of compliance as the first of the new year. Can we wait for the rulings on this case, even if it is in winter? Before, how, what are we going to lose? A year of funding, if anything? You know what I'm saying? I'm trying to think of how can we be the most prudent, because we don't want to, we've been prudent about not spending money on getting involved in the case. But are we, are we missing our prudence by trying, I don't know what that, are we missing an opportunity to be prudent by waiting for some court direction before we then spend the money to run a town meeting?
I think we talked about this in the past and decided that we were going to just move forward and get a vote from the town before we.
Okay, thank you. I've forgotten that.
Determine, but I don't know if that question was really for me or.
I really, I think that's more of a public hearing type discussion, not a working meeting type discussion. That helpful, you have to know what the consequences might be from a financial perspective. So I can't really comment on that. What I can tell you is that you should expect to be treated as out of compliance as a.
Whatever that's going to mean.
Whatever that means, whether you, whatever that means, you should expect by January 1st, if nothing changes from today, that you'll be treated as out of compliance.
Right, and part of the problem is we don't know precisely what that means, but anyway.
So can, Rick, can I answer your question?
Go ahead.
With what I think is, can we wait? Yes. Would we be out of compliance? Yes, most likely. If we don't, if we don't adopt this by the end of the year, we'll be out of compliance. But could we wait and see? Yes, the risk is we get sued for being out of compliance.
And then we spend money on a lawsuit.
Well, then it plays out from there, so.
But that's going to happen, that would happen if the town votes it down anyway.
Correct.
So I would say, my position is put it out to the town, let the town decide.
Yeah, that's my whole thing, too.
I don't feel like five of us can make that decision.
Before we move on, though, can I just jump back to your, to Dave's question? Why couldn't we put a six-month sunset in?
I'm going to answer that question for.
I mean, I'll get you more further comments and stuff, but I'm not saying you couldn't put a sunset.
No, no, I know you're going to check. I just, if we did that, if we adopted it, we would be in compliance for at least the six months, right?
I don't know that EO HLC will treat you as being in compliance. That's my point. The AGU might approve it because it may not run afoul of normal zoning practices. But the EO HLC wants a bylaw in place. And I don't know if you put one that has a six-month sunset that they'll certify. I can't say they will or won't. So I'll try to get some guidance. You know, there's a handful of people on a regular basis that are kind of having, you know, communications with the state on various issues. And so I'll vet what I can through, you know, those folks and see if any other communities have raised that. If, you know, for example, early on, we got some guidance that if you allowed home occupations in here, it was going to kick it out of the majority vote into the two-thirds vote. And then we had some back and forth, and then they came back and said, you know what? You can have home occupations. It's not going to change your quantum of vote. So we've been having discussions back and forth on different issues. I'll see what I can find out if there's been any guidance on that. My gut is that EO HLC is not going to love that idea.
You know, if I might just say one more thing, I read the Milton, I read a lot today. And.
That's why you're late.
That's why I was late. I was just thinking. I was, and one thing that struck me is that Milton, who has Goodwin Proctor, who I don't respect their billable rate, but I do respect some of those attorneys.
The quality of the work?
Yes.
And they don't attack 3A itself. Because unlike what we've heard, the state has supreme right to zone for classes of cities and towns over one. So that's not something that I think, anyhow, 3A is not the problem. The problem is how the executive branch has interpreted 3A and promulgated these guidelines. And the point is basically that they're excessive in how they've looked at the reasonable size of the district and the number of units. And it got me thinking that like, you know, what amount of development behind Crosby's would be reasonable for this town? And just bear with me one second, I'll wrap it up. But just to throw it out there, I know, I know, it's, but it's like one building. So my point is just this, Milton said, we're not complying at all. We're not going to pass the bylaw. We're done. Which is an interesting point, and it sets you up. But what about a different approach where you adopt a bylaw that's not in compliance with the executive branch, but it is in the spirit of 3A and it is a reasonable amount? That's a very, to me, that's a much stronger legal position because you're in compliance with 3A, but not necessarily these guidelines, which may or may not have been promulgated lawfully according to Goodwin Proctor. So anyhow, I just throw that out there as a consideration, as a third approach that I'd never thought about before. Because in my mind, if you have what you had on Willow, 18 units behind Crosby, I think as a town, we could live with that. 75 units, that's a different story. 200 and whatever down on Boulder, that's a different story. 40 on Boulder, I don't think we'd see what we see right here, right now. I'm just throwing that out there as another thought, which is probably going to, I understand what we're doing. We're trying to do, present to the town something that is in compliance with what the executive branch has given guidelines for, and the town can decide how we personally would vote on it. We can talk about that later, but we're just putting it forward.
We're not voting tonight, and we're going to, I hope we can get through some of these details so that we can then have a working session with the Hamilton Planning Board. So I think we should cut out, stop having a conversation about comply or not comply and just look at the details here and maybe your idea, if Robin has ideas about that, she can bring them back to the next meeting.
Absolutely.
So grateful to have you here. Can I just say that? But anyway, could we just go through the details here so that we come to some agreement on things like setbacks and height and things like that?
Yeah, I'm going to say that my copy that I have doesn't match the one Margaret has in the packet. So when we get to those points, I'll speak up.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, I know, I have the same problem. I was working off a different draft, so.
You were sent something prior that had Robin's comments on them. I did not.
Yes, I understand that. But anyway, there's different, there's different, there's different versions, and it's hard to like, put it together. I think it's Rick's point, if I can paraphrase.
Yes, it is. You can paraphrase.
I think if you look at Rick's, the one that has Rick's comments on it.
You want us to work from that?
You might be better off working from that one.
Okay, so we will put that forward.
I'm sorry, it doesn't have changes, but it has all of the comments that were made.
The only issue I have with that is I can't tell what Rick's comments are because they're not redlined.
I think it's, they're like the bold.
They're in the highlighted text.
Well, and also these lines on the side, don't they show that there was a change?
The lines are supposed to indicate what's new, but what, if you look at this.
You want to go through, want to go through it and I'll tell you?
But I think, I think that's because this, see how this is a different color from that?
Because the chart, did you get?
Sort of.
His comments don't start until page, I want to say.
They actually start on the, they actually start in number three on the third page of print, which is not on Margaret's copy she handed to you guys. That's why I got concerned. Because I talked about, oh, he.
Under A, Rick?
I think.
Oh, she put them in and she didn't highlight them. I get it. Yes, never mind.
Sorry.
No.
Can I suggest that we work from Margaret's copy and Rick, when you have comments, you tell us.
Absolutely.
Agreed. That's exactly what I was going to suggest. And Margaret, if you're going to do this again, if you can make sure that it's in color and highlighted or like yellow highlight or something, it would be so much easier.
Unfortunately, we don't have color printers for everything, but I did try to give you a color copy tonight. One of your, one of your versions has color.
But not the one with Rick's comments?
No, no. So I would say, let's go with the color version.
Okay, we're going to go with Margaret's version.
And Rick can jump in with his comments.
Yep, I can look at two drafts simultaneously. I think so.
All right, so.
So Margaret, can I ask, there's red and blue on this. What is, red reflects what? Blue reflects what?
Yep. So the red reflects all of the information that was put in by the consultant. That's the basic bylaw. And it does not save, it did not save Robin's comments. So this is the base, the first draft.
But the, and the blue is, what is the blue?
The blue, just the table of, the table came up as blue.
And that's the only blue there is? Okay, so red is just the base draft that you had prepared for us. And the black is from our current zoning bylaw, so you can see how it fits together. Okay, great. Terrific.
The comments that I did receive were from Rick.
Right. And I have some in pen because that's how I do best.
Yep. So Ann has comments, and I have comments in pen, and she has them in written comments on our own drafts.
I can give you. So.
Let's start.
Yeah, page one of Margaret's comment, Margaret's version. We've already talked about by right. Does anyone else have paid anything under principal? Overlay and special districts or principal uses?
So the black is what's currently in our bylaw.
Except not MFOD 1, because that's new.
And then when you get to F, that's where, that's where they add the new bylaw.
Right. But in terms of the multifamily overlay district, we've already asked the question whether that's what we're calling it or if we're calling it a multifamily and mixed use. It sounds like we're going with multifamily overlay district. Does everybody agree with that?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, let's move on.
Can I just ask a question? And where the purpose, is the purpose to allow mixed use and to allow multifamily housing? Because we do have mixed use in that purpose.
Where is your purpose?
Where's your purpose?
Page two.
Margaret, so you've moved on to page two. We're just turning the page. We're not there yet. No, they're, they're here. We're still on page one.
So I know we're not doing wordsmithing, but I have one really minor technical thing.
Are we going to change the bylaw here? We're not proposing.
No.
Okay, so we're not proposing any changes to the things in black because that's what's in our bylaw currently.
Correct.
Yeah.
What was your wordsmithing thing?
It was just, it just says comprised of instead of comprising two sub-districts. That's all. I said it was technical.
Where are you looking?
It's just the second line of the paragraph, which.
Oh, up top, the top, the very first.
It just should say.
Comprising two sub-districts. That is new language. That's not in there now.
Where?
It's the very first thing on page one, the very first paragraph.
Second line.
It's to see if the town will vote to amend the town of Wyndham zoning bylaw and zoning map to create a new multifamily overlay district comprising two sub-districts. It's just a word usage.
That's all, it's just, yeah.
It's errant pedantry is what it is.
Thanks, Dan.
You're welcome. It's going to come up one more time.
People, I like Oxford commas.
I know, I know.
So.
Flip the page.
Flip the page. And then F, multifamily housing and mixed use. Multifamily housing and mixed use are permitted in the multifamily overlay district. Is that how we want this to read?
So we're thinking we want mixed use to be a special permit, and we should probably remove it from this.
Well, except, so. Well, this is just the purpose, though. This is just.
This is just describing the district, right? And so we can tweak it ultimately, but if you're intending to allow mixed use by right or by special permit, then I think it's still accurate to say that multifamily housing and mixed use are permitted in accordance with the requirements of 255126, which will then have a special permit requirement. Now, if you want to be clear, once you decide ultimately what you're doing, you can always say multifamily housing is allowed as of right and mixed use is allowed by special permit in the district, subject to that.
But we say that later, so I don't see how, why we would want to, I think this is a general statement.
It just reduces ambiguity, but you know, that's why I say, once you make all your policy decisions, we go back through again and make sure that we've caught everything that needs to be clarified or changed that goes with those changes.
Yeah, so in paragraph F, just two minor things, that multifamily housing, I'm not, I think we should capitalize the housing.
Yep.
And I would strike the multifamily overlay sub-district one and multifamily overlay sub-district two because they are already included in the multifamily overlay district.
Yep. So then, the next section is the description of the multifamily overlay district. The purpose is, now, here's your question. This is where you were going, Margaret. Is to allow mixed use and to allow multifamily housing in accordance with section 3A. Mixed, we, mixed use is not, has nothing to do with section 3A, right? It's to allow multifamily housing in accordance with section 3A and to provide for mixed use development, right? Wouldn't we want to say it that way?
Well, I mean, you can certainly reference 3A, but.
Yeah, but you don't want to suggest that mixed use is, that. Yeah, but you don't wanna suggest that mixed use is, that, that you have to have mixed use to be in accordance with three A, which is how it reads now.
Well, I think because, again, I don't wanna wordsmith anything, but where it has the extra two, right, so it says, it's to allow mixed use and to allow multifamily housing in accordance with section three A. I don't think it matters, you can change it however you want.
I would just strike mis- mixed use from this paragraph in both places.
Correct, exactly.
But if you're going to allow mixed use in this district, I wouldn't take that out of your purpose section.
Yeah, but it won't be taken out, because we're gonna put it, we could put it in one of the subs- paragraphs, but right now, the next sentence says, this zoning provides for as right mixed use and multifamily housing. I don't think that's what we're doing. We're saying as right multifamily housing, because that's required by the statute, but mixed use needs a special permit.
Well, when this came to me, it was represented to me that.
No, no, I'm not, I'm not critiquing you, I'm just saying we need to change it.
Well, what I'm saying is, again, if this overlay district is gonna essentially allow two uses, multifamily housing by right and mixed uses by special permit.
Yes.
I would not eliminate the reference then to mixed use in the purpose section, because those are the two purposes.
Right, so it would read, the purpose of multifamily overlay districts is to allow multifamily housing in accordance with section three A of the zoning act. And to provide for mixed use with a special permit.
True, yeah, I mean, you can amend it, I just wouldn't take out the reference.
And then the next sentence would have to read, this zoning provides for as of, as right multifamily housing to accomplish the following purposes. Or we just take that second sentence out altogether, and say something.
Or just take out as of right.
Or just this zoning.
Provides for mixed use and multifamily housing to accomplish the following purposes.
Yeah, anyway, you get the point, we need to smith this. Yeah, either way, we need to smith it, um, so that it doesn't suggest that mixed use is by right, that's the main point.
So are we taking as of right out in the second sentence?
Why don't we do this? We'll just, I'll, I can suggest, I can work with Margaret to suggest some language updates to the fact that mixed use is not gonna be a special permit. And, you know, you guys can make sure you like that language for your next meeting.
Excellent.
We don't need to write it at the table, just for.
Great. So, anything else on this page? I kind of object to section three there, increase the municipal tax base for private investment, because it, it assumes that you would actually increase the municipal tax rate through private investment and new residential development. And I think that the work we did on the.
So just, I don't wanna cut you off, but just, so that comes out of the state's model, personally, I don't think it needs to be in there, I actually don't think it's necessarily zoning.
It's not.
So, you can take it out, and that's fine, I'm just letting you know, it came from the model.
Well, it also suggests, when you put it in here, that if it doesn't increase the tax base for private investment, that it's not permissible, or that it wouldn't be permissible, or that we would have some, you know. Ability to determine whether it was permissible, and I don't think that's within our authority to do, so I, I just think it needs to go.
I think that's only, I'm just letting you know, it, it comes from their model, I don't know who put it in there, but it, totally okay to take it out.
So is, sorry, go ahead. I was just gonna say, is all of section A written? Is it from the state's model?
It's, it's close to it, but there's more in the model than that.
Yes, pretty much.
Okay. I was just gonna add, what, what is a typology? Why, why aren't we just saying types?
You can change it anywhere you want.
Types, let's try to be as plain as possible.
No, no, that's fine.
And my other, I mean, I'm not against equal access, I just found this confusing in the next two sentences where we're talking about equal access without.
Defining it.
Explaining what we're talking about, as opposed to just access.
It could, it could just be encourage the production.
No, just strike equal access to in both one and two.
It could encourage the production of a variety of housing sizes and types. To provide access to new housing through the commu-, and it's not throughout the community, it's in these particular areas, so I don't.
I think it's just provide new housing in the community.
Housing opportunities in the community, for people with a variety of needs.
Yeah. I mean.
I, I, I kinda like A three. Uh, but I would add new residential and mixed use developments, I would add and mixed use. Because I think if this were to come before us, we would want some language in the statute that gave us something to hook, hang our hook on if, if it was gonna be a potentially. Net negative fiscal impact to this town.
So, do we have authority to make that decision?
So the multifamilies as of right, and the site plan, you're not gonna be able to deny. So, I don't think it matters if that language is in there or not, you're not going to, you don't have discretionary review over these projects, it's a, it's a light form of site plan review. So, it doesn't, you're not gonna be able to deny a project over that, um, that's multifamily. Now, maybe it would be a consideration for the mixed use, but it's not an approval standard. You know, the, the law on the purpose sections of the bylaws, these are kind of your aspirations for the bylaw, it's not necessary that every project hits on every part of the purpose. Personally, I don't necessarily think that increased municipal tax base is necessarily a zoning concern. So, normally, it's just not something I would put into bylaw, it come, I'm just, I know it's in the state's model.
I think we agreed to take it out.
Yeah, I agree, take it out, it's propaganda by the state.
Correct.
Alright, so what are we doing with one and two? Dave, what did you suggest for the equal access language?
Provide new housing in the community.
So I have it read, based on what you both just said, based on what Anne and Dave said, encourage the production of a variety of housing sizes and types. To provide access to new housing opportunities in the community, for people with a variety of needs and income levels, period.
I don't think acci-, I don't know what access means. Uh, we're not gonna facilitate people getting in there, we're not gonna subsidize realtors.
We're not developing anything. The town is not developing anything.
So you wanted to just say to provide new housing.
And provides housing.
Opportunities in the community.
New housing opportunities in the community.
Now, do you want it to end in community, or you want, okay, so we'll end at community, okay? There you go.
Oh my god.
Because that's gonna happen on the ten percent of the affordable part, all that'll happen through that system.
Right, that's, that's right.
I don't think there's gonna be a lot of changes in this, actually.
That's why you're having a working group.
Yep.
Have any issue with the table?
I do, not on this page, on the next page.
Is everyone comfortable with number two?
Uh, I think I had a comment on it, when I was looking through it.
What's number two, what are we talking about?
It's vibrant communities, blah, 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 where did I?
That aligns with their master plan.
It does.
So, I like that language, it connects the two.
Yeah, me too.
Yeah, but instead of, I, I think I had some wordsmithing, I'm sorry, support vibrant neighborhoods by encouraging an appropriate mix and intensity of uses. That create an active public space, providing access to blah, blah, blah.
Good.
Well, the only thing I'll say about, though, is that the new projects may not have public spaces, so. You know, but.
Well, then we shouldn't be mentioning them here at all. But it, I mean, this is, the, this is a policy statement, right? What we want, vibrant neighborhoods, appropriate mi- mix and intensity of uses.
But are we taking access to out of this, so it just says that provides housing jobs?
Yeah.
Okay.
That provides housing, okay, so taking equal access out, and you wanted to change the word support?
No, support is fine, what I said in here was, support vibrant neighborhoods by encouraging an appropriate mix and intensity of uses that create an active public space, providing. Housing jobs, gathering spaces, et cetera, et cetera.
Good, I mean.
That's policy.
Alright.
I'll take it.
So, Rick, you have issues with the table?
On page two of the table.
Wait, 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 before you get there, does anybody else have an issue with the table?
No.
I didn't, but I'm interested in Rick's comments.
Okay, so Rick, go ahead.
Particularly hearing from people over the past few months has been the fact that these are being situated in, uh, established residential neighborhoods.
Yep.
Um, so my thing is to increase setbacks, uh, from what's there to, you know, half again or twice as much. To get, now, not to be a deterrent, I know we can't deter, we can't make it difficult for people to build, but I think, given the height of these buildings and the mass of them. If we can put them farther away from the neighbor's property, they may have a better chance of fitting in. So, did you see my number changes? No, you don't see them, do you?
No, they don't.
I don't see the number changes, but I did have a question, because this says front yard setback, see buffer section F, and buffer section F says fifty feet, so. That was my question, it wasn't necessarily about the table, it was more about buffer section F and I, or maybe it was something else, and how they all work together. Because it feels like we have like all these different buffer sections, and they don't agree.
So, the buffers are required when it abuts a residential neighborhood.
Right.
This particular property on one, two sides abuts residentially zoned property.
And there you've got fifty feet.
That's district one, right?
Yes, district one, so district one abuts business.
Walnut Lane, we heard.
Where the railroad tracks are, on the other side.
And Crosby.
Yep, and then Crosby is commercial.
Right.
So, there's two sec-, two sides of it that would require a fifty-foot buffer. And we have been asked by a resident to increase that to one hundred feet. Um, the people who live on Walnut Lane had asked if we could increase that to one hundred feet.
Does anybody know what the dimension of this room is?
I think, uh, forty or so.
So this is forty feet.
I have to excuse myself for ten minutes, I'll be right back, please keep going, I'm sorry.
Okay, that's fine.
So, Anne, as you have this discussion, I just wanna say, I agree with you when I read this, and it's something I fed to Margaret, there's all these different setbacks and buffers, and. I was never great at geometry, so I'm having a hard time picturing how they all fit together, but I encourage you as you read them, that's the kinda thing, we wanna make sure they all work together and they're succinct.
Yeah, I was really good at geometry, I have an engineering degree, and it's confusing to me.
Okay, so, I, I'm hoping then that you'll lead us through understanding those. The only other thing I'll caution about is obviously you worked with your consultant to get these initial numbers down. If you're gonna start changing things, I recommend you have your consultant reconfirm, or a consultant, that everything still meets the guidelines. That's just not part of the legal review, that's kinda the planning review on this, so, we do wanna.
That's our consultant.
Yeah.
Well, again, I recommend.
Plug these numbers in.
Just that you check that, if you're gonna start changing, that you make sure you still get your fifteen units, and, and the compliance is.
Oh, I see, right.
So, meaning, if we have a fifty-foot buffer on two sides of district one, we might not be able to fit the full complement of units, is that what you?
Which doesn't mean we're developing anything, it's a zoning exercise.
Look at it as us reducing the, uh, developable land.
I mean, they, they may, I mean, if, if you say you used to be able to use this much of the property, now you can only use this much of the property, but you can't go any higher, I'm just saying, you wanna run your numbers.
Wanna make sure that it fits.
And make sure that it still complies.
Uh, do you want me to, can I run the one hundred foot buffer also?
I think you should.
I think you should, I think you should have all these permutations figured out for next meeting.
I mean, if it doesn't affect the compliance numbers, and.
I wanna get back to Mr. Woodland's suggestion about changing some of these numbers, and wondering what that was, and.
Sure.
How it fits with the suspension.
But now that I hear the fifty feet, I didn't understand no geometry and no legal. I didn't.
How about engineering, you got that?
No, I got practical.
More important.
More important. Uh, and, and F, it says the buffer is fifty feet. Why I was modifying that those buffers, the, the setbacks, um, is I didn't understand the connection between the two of them. The buffers in section F gave greater setback than what I was gonna propose. So, I'll remove those comments from there, because it appears that section F fifty buffer, potentially one hundred, will cover what I was commenting on.
Great.
So we can stop.
This table mimics our current dimensional requirements for any property, any, any property.
Oh, oh.
Any residential development.
Table chart, not table, okay.
Here, here's, here's my question about that, though, is this minimum frontage the lot frontage? Because it's all on one lot, right? So, it's not the building frontage, it's the.
No, frontage is where it.
It's the street, I know, but it's all, it's not like separate lots, right?
It could be subdivided, yeah.
Okay, that's, that's the question.
So you wanna just account for the fact that it may not always be one lot?
Okay.
Yeah, and if someone comes in and they create a street.
Moving on.
We still in the section, or are we out of the chart? Where are we?
Um, I think I'm okay with the setbacks that we have on this chart with the buffer, and I'll run those numbers.
So I have a pet peeve.
Run it to any number, like run it to seventy-five, to see if it fits, you know what I mean, try some different numbers to see if there's a balance between what we're required to do and what the neighbors would like.
And we don't wanna go more than three stories, and, and my pet peeve, in addition to the Oxford comma problem, is percent should be spelled out in text. If we can do that.
Alright, since, I have an issue with paragraph number five.
Which has percent, not spelled out.
Yeah, it does, it wasn't, it wasn't that, though.
Yeah, I mean, again, a lot of this comes more or less out of the model.
Yeah, 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 no, it's fine, but we don't have to limit it.
I don't like the existing language about exceptions to height limitations. Right now, it says, the limitation on height of buildings shall not apply to chimneys, ventilators, towers, silos, spires, or other ornamental features of buildings. I, I mean, w- why wouldn't it apply to a tower, silo, or spire?
I think that's actually language from our zoning bylaw currently.
Okay, so we should amend it in the other place, too.
Where is it?
So.
Let me, I can bring it up.
I propose that we change this to say, the limitation on height of buildings shall not apply to chimneys, ventilators, or ornamental features of buildings. Which features are in no way used for living purposes, blah, blah, so.
But, do we really wanna do that on a three-story building?
I, I, my concern about having a spire on a three-story building, they're gonna illuminate it at night.
Yeah, I don't.
I mean, I don't want any of that, I mean, I have all lighting, then, I wouldn't wanna see, I wouldn't wanna see my backyard.
Some comments on the lighting.
I didn't wanna put, I didn't wanna put the actual word spire or tower or in here like we're.
Why would you have that exception at all for a three-story building?
A church, well, maybe if it's in the town thing, it was probably for a church or something, right?
You know, and I apologize, it's not.
No, so what, what's currently in your bylaw allows a, um, a special permit to address height.
Right.
It's, it's different.
You have to have a board of appeals special permit to exceed the height requirements.
Yeah, maximum height per structure is thirty-five feet.
Yeah, so it's, it's not this.
So should we just take out the exceptions, then?
Well, I think it's up to you, I mean, are you gonna apply the height to a chimney or HVAC, probably.
That's why I left chimneys and ventilators.
Yeah, no, 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 you said, should we take it out completely?
Yeah.
I think, I think if you take it out completely, again, you might have a compliance issue, because now you might lose a story, or your height, a feet, because you're counting the HVAC.
Yeah, I think the HVAC, right, you have to count that.
Right, you have to let that happen, right, right, okay.
Okay, so do you wanna just limit it at chimneys and ventilators?
It should not have been ventilators.
Just chimneys and ventilators.
Is ventilators the right word for HVAC? Heating and ventilation?
That's what the V is in.
No, I know, but don't we have to say heating and ventilation?
Yeah, maybe we should change it to HVAC.
Yeah, sure.
Which is what? We say, just say HVAC equipment.
Yeah, not apply to chimneys or HVAC equipment.
You might wanna just check with Rich, the building commissioner, and just see if there's anything else that's customary that he recommends be in here that's similar to chimneys or HVAC.
Right.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else on this section?
No more towers or spires.
Installation of solar and photovoltaic, solar thermal, living and other echo roofs, energy storage and air source heat pump equipment.
So on this one, this comes out of the model, and you'll see there's that section, and then it has like X in parentheses, that's just something that has, we'll clean up in the end, but it has to be.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Where, where are we? Oh, okay.
It says, I actually, that, that looks fine to me.
Renewable energy thing, energy thing, okay.
Yeah. Okay, applicable definitions.
I have one on this page, one question.
Sure.
So, in the multifamily housing definition, do we wanna set, set a maximum?
Well, I think the max, I mean, the maximum is gonna be set by the dimensions, right, like, you, you. It's a co-, I mean, it's accomplished, I think, because you've built this to be fifteen units per acre, right, so like you.
No, I.
I think it's thirteen in MFOD.
You probably want more smaller units and not fewer larger buildings to fit into the town, wouldn't you?
What, do you mean maximum units, or?
I mean, in the definition, right, so this is to allow multifamily housing by right.
This is the state definition of multifamily housing.
We can't change this?
I would not recommend that you change any of the definitions, particularly the state's definition of multifamily housing.
Okay, but can we go back to six? I got one more nit to pick, sorry. So, it, blah, 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 solar thermal, living and other echo roofs, the comma after living should go away.
Sure.
Because living modifies echo roof, okay, sorry. So the definitions we're not allowed to touch, you're saying?
I'm not saying you can't touch them, I'm saying if particularly definition of multifamily housing is the state's.
I see.
Definition of multifamily housing.
So if we change it and say, you know, building with three or more but less than ten or something like, would, we risk coming out of compliance, is that what you're saying? Okay.
Oh, jeez. And, are all of the, which of these definitions, I'm, I'm assuming mixed use development is not defined in the state?
That's the state definition.
It is the state definition.
Yeah, so if you look in, um, forty A, one A, they, when they passed the most recent changes, they also, I'll just pull up the exact language, I didn't print the whole statute.
Yeah, but we don't have to use the state's definition for mixed use.
So the only reason I would recommend using the state definition for mixed use is that you can adopt as of right or special permit, mixed use housing by a majority vote. And if you use a definition that's different than the state definition, I can't say for sure that the attorney general's gonna let you adopt that by majority vote, because now you may be adopting a form of mixed use, which is not what's contemplated by the zoning act.
So my question is, if we say, if we strike the word industrial, right? I wanted to change it, we're out of compliance, so if we have any mixed use, even by right. I wanted to change it. We're out of compliance, so if we have any mixed use, even by right, we have to be able to allow industrial use?
Not necessarily because you're gonna list the specific types of mixed uses.
Then why can't we get rid of it here?
So, hold on. Let me just pull up the definition in the statute real quick and we'll go for it.
Wait a second, let me back up for a second, Rob, cause you just said, unless this is mixed use as of right?
Or a special permit, either one. So, you can-
Or a special, okay.
What I'm saying is if you don't use their definition, I don't know that they'll say that you have adopted the type of mixed use. That's like, for example, when we do ADUs, there's a definition for accessory dwelling units in the statute. And if any community wants to use a different definition, I just caution them, that's fine, but you may not be able to adopt this by majority vote because you're not adopting statutory accessory dwelling units. If you use a different definition from mixed use, then you're not necessarily adopting mixed use that forty-eight-five says you can adopt by a majority vote. You're adopting some other form of mixed use.
So, to echo Rick's comment, my question here was about industrial and-
I get it.
An- an observation is, this is a terrible definition to begin with because it- it ends with "or other uses," which is as vague as it could get.
Yeah, right, like what the heck?
So, what, I mean, theoretically, somebody could say industrial, I guess, is an other use, but why do we have to specifically call out industrial?
So, again, the- the answer I gave is the- is the only answer I can give you, which is you just risk a quantum of vote issue. I think the best way to- to address that is to specifically list the types of commercial uses that will be allowed as part of a mixed-use development in this zone and say, if it's not listed, you can't do it.
And when you say list it, you don't mean in this definition. You mean somewhere else.
No, I mean, yes.
Elsewhere, right?
In here, you're gonna have a section in here now that says-
Permitted uses, da-da-da-da-da.
Yeah, so you're gonna say mix- so if you go down to W, there's a section in here on mixed-use development. It talks about what's allowed on the ground floor and any floor, and then, so you can build into that section-
Yeah, okay.
The specific things, and you can say, these are the types of-
Right, if it says why, you can do it. If it doesn't say why, you can't.
Exactly.
And that supersedes this paragraph we're talking about?
So, we always say that the specific controls the general.
Yeah.
Got it, okay.
So, this is the general and then later is the specific. We're limiting it further. I have a question before we go any further, and that is, we asked for police, um, at tonight's meeting because last time, the meeting was fairly contentious and some of us felt like we were not comfortable. I'm wondering, at this point, if we can let the officer go home to his family.
It's up to you guys. I'm here for us.
I would say yes.
I would say yes.
Yes, I agree.
I- I think we can, we can let you go and say thank you very much for your time and your service to the town.
I'll let the rest of officers on. They'll come over here. I'll let them know we're taking off, so.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thanks.
Bye-bye.
Of course, if you go outside and there's an angry mob with pitchforks, we might ask you to stay.
Call us. We'll be there.
Thank you.
I know you're right across the parking lot, so we're grateful.
Bye-bye.
Thank you.
Okay. Any questions on subsidized housing inventory? That's another state definition, blah, 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 right?
Um, yeah, there's definitions of, that, yes. So, anything that you wanna change, I will be happy to take another look at. The SHI definition's not the definition from the one-A definitions in the statute. I believe it's the definition from the guidelines cause they have additional definitions.
Okay.
Yeah.
Rick, do you have any thoughts about?
Can you look at a little bit?
Air, oh, cooler, yeah.
Is the air conditioning in here?
There's a problem with it, yeah.
No, I didn't have comments on subsidized housing. I think that's just standard and-
That's the standard language from your perspective, okay.
Correct.
All right, on to Section C, overlay district. The multifamily overlay district gives an overlay district comprised of two sub-districts.
It's my second comprising.
Uh, yep, comprising two sub-districts.
Did we catch them all now, Dan?
I think so. Um, and then there's a the missing on the map.
Being, which I don't know about that.
It says, "As shown on map."
On the map, on file. With the office of Town Clerk entitled yadda-yadda.
And we'll see what the new maps will be entitled. We'll put that in.
Um, at the end of C, where there's new language?
Yeah.
What does McMod stand for? I know what MFOD is, but what's MCmod?
So, I think that if you go back to, at least it had it originally, I guess it's changed. Originally, that was the name of the district, but I think it says changed.
So, it's M?
It should be MFOD.
Yeah, MFOD, yeah. So, it just changed, yeah.
And we have a short form somewhere in front that tells-
And those, again, those are all the things at the end. Marie For and Jack and-
Yep, yep, you got it. I just was looking like I didn't know what McMod was.
Okay, D, I have a significant problem with, cause it says that multi-fa- mixed-use developments are permitted as of right in the MFOD one and two, and that's not what we're gonna do, so we need to fix this.
So, we'll change that, yep.
So, take out and mixed use?
Well, we're not gonna take it out because it is allowed. It's allowed by special permit.
We're just gonna redo it, so-
Adjust it so it's allowed by special permit.
Mixed by special permit, great. I had that, okay, good, um-
So, we got, and then in E, it's just site plan approval.
So, we'll have to adjust-
But we have a special permit now for the mixed-use portion.
So, we'll have to adjust for that as well, yes.
Okay, so, and does that get put in here in E?
Yep.
I have a question about E. Why do we have exceptions in E to the buffer? Or why do we have these exceptions?
We don't see exceptions in the buffer.
I'm sorry, I'm in F. I'm in F. Sorry, I thought you meant-
Thank you. Nice to see you. Thanks for coming out.
Okay, so F.
F.
You mean except for driveways?
Yeah.
Because if you said that you had to have a fifty-foot landscape buffer around the entire perimeter,
You couldn't get a driveway through.
then you couldn't get in.
Okay.
So, you need an exception.
Okay.
Like, Dan, like literally, Dan, if you plant, look, if you have a fifty-foot landscape trees all the way-
I don't know, but this is just up against residential. I didn't, I didn't interpret this as the entire perimeter of the lot.
Yeah, but, so that would mean, though, that the driveway had to be at least fifty feet away from the, it's from the-
It means the access can't come through residential area.
They- they may wanna go through residential to access it. Do you know what I mean?
Can we say no?
Well, so, let's think about District One, sub-district one, right? So, the, we've already heard from people who want a bigger buffer than fifty feet.
And they all live on Walnut Lane.
I don't think that they would be okay if we ran the driveway through the buffer zone.
Well, but it might not be that buffer. It might be, Enon Village may- may wanna grant them access through theirs. Do you know?
Right, so, I was interpreting this to, these are exceptions to, I thought, the perimeter against residential land.
It is.
Okay.
Suppose they wanted to allow access from Enon Village, that Enon Village agreed to give them access.
Wait, is E, is Enon Village in this overlay district?
No, but it's next to it.
No, but it's next to it.
But if it's-
You could come in through Enon Village or you could come in through Walnut Lane.
But if Enon Village is not zoned for multifamily housing?
It is.
It is.
Oh, it is, okay.
It's, um-
Oh, is it a senior?
Public housing.
It's, um-
Public housing.
Okay, because obviously, if they're accessing residential property, it has to be zoned for the same type of housing in order.
It is.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, they can't access any other residential, just to residential?
It's not, not-
I know they can't go to commercial to residential.
Well, it has to be in the same use, so it would have to allow more, it's the same thing, like-
Okay, have the multifamily.
Yeah. But you're saying it is. So, this is a policy-
There's no way to use these buffers to avoid access. I mean, it's been a long time since I took the bar exam and this was the last time I thought about accessing a parcel, what you can and cannot require zoning, because usually, we've already done it. You can't, we can't use these buffers to limit the driveway location for some type of facility?
You may be able to, but, you know, I think you have to take a look at, there, the state's not gonna prove anything that becomes prohibitive. So, I think you have to take a look at it realistically, if you're gonna do something like that and make sure. So, for example, like, if this is the whole frontage, right?
Yeah.
And you're saying, we have a resident over here, so you have to have, it should be fifty feet away before you can cut in and from twenty feet to here is wet and that, and you, then you can't, you know? So, you just have to make sure that you have documented that none of these requirements are actually prohibitive.
On the property we've cho- we-
In the district, in the district.
And how do you do that? By just saying it's standard around town? I mean, how do you say it's not?
But it's, there aren't any wetlands on this property, right?
It's, I don't think it's standard around town to have these-
So, what we're talking about is twenty-one? No, we're not talking about twenty-one.
Yes, we're talking about twenty-one.
Twenty-one and twenty, right?
And twenty, yeah.
So, so it looks like they can't access it from Walnut Lane anyway, cause there's a wetland there.
Yeah.
We're talking about fifty-foot buffer here-
Fifty feet right there.
Right.
And here. On here and along this one here and here, because this is a residential district here and here.
Right. Right.
This is technically not residential right here.
No, it's a commercial zone.
Okay.
And this is commercial up here. So, this would be where the buffer would be, and that's, these people are the people who-
Right, and does, and by doing that, do we essentially suggest strongly that we want access either through the commercial property or through Enon Village?
What's twenty-two? Is that a residential lot?
Twenty-two.
It's the one with all the wetlands at the end of the road.
The one at the end with the road which hasn't been built.
No, no, see Walnut Lane? That's twen- that's twenty-two, yep.
This is a Walnut Lane.
Oh, okay, they were here tonight, yeah.
Oh, it is there, okay.
So, I don't think that there's gonna be access through-
The driveway, I see.
Twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five.
Yeah, they can't, there's no access through there.
Decided to sell his land to them.
Not hearing that from what he said, but, okay.
Yeah, but you know what I mean, like, something like that could happen in the future.
So, my, all right, so to go back to my question about the exceptions was, if we're putting the buffer in for the purpose of buffering these residential properties, I- I understand the access point, but wh- what if that becomes the main access to this property through, you know, coming down, see what it says, handle, right there, right? So, if you come through there, and now you've got the main access running along all these residential properties, aren't we defeating the purpose of that buffer? I mean, I don't think that those residents wanna look at-
Well, there's, there's no bu- yeah, there's no buffer here.
Cause that's commercial.
Oh, okay.
Cause that's Crosby's up there.
Oh, okay, so-
That's not a house, that's Crosby's.
Your house is here?
Got you.
Let me see if I can get that now.
Yeah, I mean, this, this is really just a policy question for you folks, as long as it doesn't, you know, become a prohibitive issue, which it doesn't seem like it does, cause there's front, isn't there a frontage on one A there?
So, we're talking about, yeah.
Oh, yeah, there are houses there, okay.
Yeah, so, I'm- I'm really just talking about twenty-three, twenty-four.
What's that?
You're talking about the houses that butt, already butt up against Crosby. Right?
Um-
And, in other words, the top there, where she's got the finger going, that's where that would be important, is the fifty feet.
I was referring more to the right side of the parcel.
Right.
The sort of the right top part, but-
But all of it, really.
Well, I mean, I- I, look, if we need to allow access for driveways, I understand. My question about the stormwater retention facilities, are those meant to be underground facilities? I mean, what are, are we talking about like a cul-de-sac or something?
Usually, like a big sump.
I didn't write, I don't think you'd be like, I would know.
A stormwater retention facility is usually like a pond.
What, it could, or a swale?
It's like that swale thing out at-
Well, they can also-
No, they, on loose, on Lily Lane, Lily Road, they built them under the driveway.
You can build them underground. They're, like-
No, I know you can, but, but this doesn't limit it to that.
Cause stormwater retention would be a pond.
This is any stormwater retention.
Okay.
It could be a pond. It could be, it could be a swale.
Well, it says a facility.
It could be like that dip by whatever that new development is.
I just, I didn't interpret facility to mean pond, but-
Spring Hill, right.
Yeah, Spring Hill, there's that swale. I- I don't know what they meant by the use of the word facility, but if it's engineered-
I interpreted it as an engineered, not, not natural.
But a pond, a pond and a swale are engineered structures.
Right, but I was, what struck me when I read this was something like a cul-de-sac thing that goes under, usually, which is usually underground.
Yeah, I don't think that's what it means, but-
I was trying to figure, trying to think, what would be on the surface here that you would put in the buffer?
It would be like a pond.
It would, okay.
Be a pond.
Or swale.
Or swale.
Stormwater.
Okay.
Um, I had a question and I've forgotten what it was now.
So, I- I think this is something to give a little further to look at.
The buffer.
To keep whether or not you want this exemption, but I think it, you need to think about it and study it a little more.
Well, could the, could the exemption, is, and I'm trying to find the language, is it, is it within our discretion whether or not we can? It's may waive, so. Right? Is it? Buffer fifty feet, bada, 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 but a, except for driveways, so that's not, that's not within our discretion. Doesn't give us much, in a way, of the ability to direct where the driveway should be.
No, I mean, if you're gonna take it out, you might wanna think about if you're gonna take it out as an exception that you add it in as a potential, like waiver item or something key.
Yeah.
But I think it's something to think about with the site as well.
Why wouldn't, yeah, why wouldn't we drop those down into the list of waivers?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, again, just to be clear, I didn't write any of this, so I don't, no, you're asking me, like, I know why things are in here, or, you know, those are probably more Margaret questions or consulting questions.
It's really, it's really a question of, if we do that, are we gonna run afoul? If we do that, are we gonna run afoul of three A? That's really the question.
Well, and some, there are some things I wanna look at in regards to that, that I'll report back on, but, um, again, you know, it becomes a prohibitive. It becomes a question of, you can't build things into this as requirements or limitations.
Right, but you can ask for a waiver.
Yes, but then there's discretion. So, EOHLC is, I, in my understanding, is they're gonna take an issue with anything that on its face is prohibitive. The fact that you might be able to waive it isn't gonna cure it because that's discretionary. They want, it needs to be something that someone can come in and as of right accomplish.
All right, so we need follow-up on this.
Yes.
Can I ask a question? We're talking driveways, but isn't this a subdivision? So, shouldn't it be a street in subdivision rules?
Well, I don't know that it's a subdivision.
Not necessarily. They could just build it all on one parcel.
On one parcel, but multiple buildings?
Yes. So, multifamily allows multiple buildings-
On a parcel.
On a parcel. Yes.
Like, when you set, when you, when you, okay.
So, you wouldn't necessarily divide the parcel. You might just have three buildings on one lot.
Correct.
But they could divide this parcel.
Potentially.
If they wanted to, but they-
Could also be condominium, right?
Yeah, I mean, it could be a par, it could be rental ownership.
The ownership could be high-end, except for the ten percent.
So, are we okay with F? Yeah, we're following up on it.
Although, we're gonna follow up on whether we can put the exception as a waiver.
And Margaret's gonna follow up on the numbers.
Open space, looks good.
I had one.
I wanted to know why you have- I wanted to know why you have.
Number.
Paragraph one and paragraph two say exactly the same thing, couldn't you just say in the M F O D, a minimum twenty percent open space should be provided?
So this seems to be broken into two dis- sub-districts, one and two, one is the Walnut, uh, area.
But it's the same requirement for both of them.
It's Boulder Lane, is M F O D two.
But I think what Anne is saying for this particular requirement, they're the same, so you could just say in the M F O D period.
Okay.
Right, and then you don't need, you can go to six paragraphs instead of seven, it just makes it.
Um, in paragraph, sub-paragraph five there, I would strike the and at the end of line one.
You wanna make it correct?
It, it, for some reason, it says and education in the middle of the sequen-.
String. That's weird.
Plus, it's an or later, and that would be confused.
Right, and, and the, in the sub-paragraph four, which will now be three, there's my nitpicky percent spell out, and also in six, too soon to be five. Sorry about that. Realize how annoying I am about stuff like that.
I have a question for Robin about H.
Anybody got anything on?
Five?
Open space, other than what we've already said?
In, in five, so, um, it says it can be used for conservation, open space, outdoor, blah, 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 blah. That is, the developer can use this as open space, or is this the contiguous areas that are open space?
So this would be, the developer's doing a whole project?
Uh-huh.
There's a requirement that twenty percent of that project be open space?
Okay.
And this is what it can be used for?
And then my question is, are things like solar arrays allowed in that space? Like, could, could you build something in there even though it's open space?
So I think that's a question for you folks to decide, you know, right now, no, cause it's saying, um, these list, it's listing what it can be used for.
Right, and I think it shouldn't say shall be used, but may be used, cause you don't have to u- you don't have to use it for all these things, right?
Over here. I have just a question, thank you.
Sure. Do we want solar arrays in the open space? I would say no, I think those are rooftop things for a multifamily home.
I agree.
I just wanna make sure that it's not, if, if we're banning it, you know.
I mean, if it's on the ground, in that location.
Well, they're not allowed in town, in that, on the ground right now, if I'm aware correctly, right, solar arrays not allowed on the ground.
Well, except, I think you can, I think you can with a permit.
A special permit.
Well, I, I think we'd have to look at that, I don't want you guys to presume, because we're not talking about a standalone solar project here, you're talking about a development that would have solar as part of its development, and it would be accessible to the development.
To feed.
As a practical matter, I don't think it would work on the ground, it's no light there, you'd be better off putting it on the roof of Crosby's and connecting a wire, but, or on the roof of the buildings, should there be.
You're not gonna get any light there.
Did you say roof?
I did say roof. My mother was from Salt, that Salt Lake City.
Sorry. Are we in H?
We are. Ownership of the contiguous open space.
Yep, so Robin.
Yes.
By what authority are we able to do this?
Right, we're demanding it. Um, I think it should say may.
Well, I mean, that's pretty standard language, I think it's already in your, I think, yeah, it's pretty, I mean, standard, you either needed to be owned by the town, or like a nonprofit, or, or, it has to be in order to, um. Vest, I mean, you don't have to do it that way, but it's, it's, so, I will tell you that if you.
It mandates it, though.
Yeah, no, well, I'll tell you, if you go to, um, section, so this is where this comes from, just so you know, so if you go into Article eleven, Special Residential Regulations in your existing zoning bylaw.
I'm looking.
So two-five-five, eleven, one, F.
Okay.
Ownership of the contiguous open space.
Where, where are you? Eleven-one F?
Um. Yeah, eleven-one, and then there goes A, purpose, B, C, D, E, there's an F.
Eleven, eleven-one is flexible development.
Yes.
It's up on the screen, Anne.
Yeah, just, there you go, so there, there, so this is where, this is similar to, not the same, but similar to what you already have.
Oh. Oh, F.
This is under flexible development, so like, um, what I'm hoping.
So it's similar to how you're already treating flexible developments.
Yeah, I'm looking at the, I, I might have to replace those anymore.
Does the town get to approve who the nonprofit is?
So there, normally, there's only a handful that do this, like Essex County, Green Bell, you know, normally, we treat these like conservation restrictions, so that they don't expire after thirty years, and in order for them to qualify with the state, they have to be held a certain way, so.
Right.
I, again, this is in here, it's my understanding that this was put in here as something for you to consider based on, similar language is already in your bylaw, you can have a different scheme.
I'm just, there, there's a provision in the subdivision control law, right, was it, I don't, I can't remember the subdivision, is it eighty-one M or something, where?
You can't, so this isn't subdivision, though.
Oh, I know.
Yeah.
Okay, but, so is the consideration here, we're allowing you to build at a higher density?
Yes.
So therefore, we're, okay.
Yes, yeah, so I mean, this is kinda like the same thought process that we would have behind, um.
Away in a special residential thing.
Yep.
Okay, I'm good with that.
Okay.
Yep.
I'm good.
Yep, but you're right, that is in subdivision control.
Yep.
You're it.
And we're, we've got the town, the nonprofit organization, blah, 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 and there's not this corporation or trust owned jointly or in common by the owners of lots, and that's because, which is in the original up there. Um, because it's.
Because this, this is how it came to me, and the other thing is that in a flexible development, you have multiple lots.
Right, and you don't.
Here, you may not, so if you did, you basically would have the developer owning your.
Right, and, and it's, and here, you might have rental properties, and you're not gonna have a coalition of owners.
No, what you'd end up having is an entity that's solely controlled by the developer, yeah, and so I think the thought, I think the thought was, you didn't wanna end up in a situation where it's one lot and you have an entity solely controlled by the developer.
This is better. Okay, so that's great, cause that, that, that was my question about that, thank you. Okay, off-street parking, I bet everybody has comments on this, like, why in M F O D one do we need two spaces per unit?
That was just what I suggested.
And what do we do about parking for a commercial? I don't feel like that's very well integrated.
So I think I had, I, I had made a comment previously that I thought, that I recommended you put something in here that deals with the, um, required parking for mixed use, cause right now, this is only dealing with parking for the housing part.
Right. Right. Right.
Cause I understand the spirit of this law, it's the idea to get cars off the road, get you close to the M B T A.
Right. Which works in M F O D one, but not two, because two is up on the highway.
Commercial, up the highway, right, okay, so in one, why do we have two unit, cars per unit? I mean, I understand, but isn't it?
I just said the same thing.
Did you say that? I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
I did.
It's okay. So, again.
Didn't like the way that you said it.
I didn't propose any of this, I'm happy to answer your legal questions.
I wouldn't have known that if I heard you, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that was, that was, that was, that was my point.
So.
Cause if, if we're being stuck to had to be, if we're supposed to be following the intent of the law, it works both ways, right? It works to reduce parking as well as increase density.
Currently, our bylaw on the parking requires two parking spaces per unit for a single or multifamily dwelling.
So that may, to your point, not be what you wanna carry forward, um, for these projects?
Yep.
Maybe in this district, it should be one per unit.
Uh, to me, that puts pressure back on the M B T A to make it more reliable for people to use it, and the developer to market to pay, well, I know.
I wouldn't count on.
The developer to market to people who wanna.
I mean, another option to think about.
That's why I think it's gonna fail.
Right?
It's a single-track line, you're never gonna have fifteen-minute interval trains, ever.
No, I, and to your point, though, another option to think about is whether or not you wanna set a parking maximum, like, for how many spots you can have.
Well, and, and how does that play with what we want for, if there's a mixed-use portion of this? I mean, if it's one, if it's one space per unit, just say, just so I'm making this up. And, and then you say, or, or if it's two spaces per unit, if it's not mixed-use, and one space per unit if it is, plus additional parking, which the residents may use, or something like that.
I don't know, I mean, I, I don't know why would, why the amount of parking you need for the multifamily housing units would be different if there's a mixed-use component or not, I think you wanna just set in a mixed-use amount, like, whether it's per square footage, or something. You know, if you say one spot for.
Well, the question is whether it's dedicated to the.
Well, and those, and those are, that's what you guys have to figure out, is, are you gonna say, look, you know, maximum parking on the site is whatever it's based off of, and that, um, you know, that changes if there's a mixed-use component, or you're gonna say one spot per residential unit? X number of spots per mixed uni, I, I mean, there's different ways that you can do it, but.
Mm-hmm.
How granularly can we regulate this?
I mean, you can pretty much do whatever you want, and then build in some flexibility to alter it.
So if we said, if we said that there shall be two spaces in underground parking for every residential unit, which may only be used by the residents? With fixed number of, um, parking spaces for mixed use at surface, at, at the surface level, could we do something that granular?
So, I mean, I think you could, I don't know from a planning perspective, and again, that's something you, I think you'd want Margaret to comment or run by your consultant, that two spaces per residential unit is really something you need or don't need, or I don't know the answer to that.
Underground is really the key there, cause.
But are, but are you requiring underground, see, I, I don't know that you can require that, again, it becomes a question.
That's why I asked how, how much, how granularly we can regulate this.
So, it then becomes another question of like.
Developability.
Yeah.
Do you make it, are you making it so?
And you can't have, conceptually, more rigorous type requirements for this zoning than you do other places, so for example, you couldn't require like higher energy efficiency here than somewhere else, because it'll be viewed as prohibitive.
So our current zoning requires two per unit?
It does.
So we gotta.
So it sounds like what, what this comes down to, what we could do less, so. My question is, if we do two per unit at Boulder, is that somehow gonna affect the number of units we can put there, because do they need too much space to put two units, two parking spaces in for each unit? Which, cause that's gonna be, what, two hundred and ninety potential units?
Or they're, yeah. Or you have to go up in stories, because that first floor is basically gonna be parking.
And then, it's, sorry, and then it sounds to me like the proposal is, maybe we make District one, one per unit, and District two, two, but it can't be more than two, or it could be one and a half, or it could be one point, something else.
Because District two will certainly need more parking, cause there's more M B T A over there.
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly.
So the people living there would need.
Would need access to the highway, that's the whole point, right?
Um, you, we can write it so that we require two, but we can, you can negotiate for fewer, you can have it, um.
Usually, if you required.
Like, say they're all one-bedroom of units, certainly, you wouldn't require two cars, uh, two parking spaces for a one-bedroom unit, you, you don't have to, if it's a three-bedroom unit, you might.
Yeah.
So. I don't see how. It's for working families, that's what this is for, correct? So a working family would ever have less than two cars?
We don't know if this is for working families, it could be for single people who.
I don't know if it's for working families. Well, it's for, it's for appropriate for families.
Could be a single parent.
And it's what, that's what the legislative purpose of this is.
I mean, it does have to be suitable for families with children, but I think to Rick's point, like, for what you're citing near a train station.
Let's stay on that.
You're not necessarily gonna need two spaces per unit.
Alright, but I'm just saying, I'm just, yeah, that's great, but look, i- i- let's play through the, the, I think you have to build it with practicality in mind, not for what a future state's gonna be. So, in my mind, if I am a working family, there are two, in this area, there are two cars in my household, that is an assumption in Wyndham. I don't know if that's true, that's just in my mind, so the alternative is we say, you only have to build with one parking place, that doesn't mean that the household's not gonna have two cars, so then what are they gonna do with that second car?
The parking lot right next door.
In Crosby's, which is gonna be a disaster, or they're gonna start parking on Walnut, or on one A, or in D lights.
M B T A.
Well, or. Aren't they gonna park, I mean, we only use about a third of that train station parking area.
But we don't own it.
The parking has to be on the parcels, the, it, within the district.
Unfortunately.
Well, he's saying the spillover would be in there, but I mean, th- th- we don't control that, and that's just, I mean, these are just gonna become public policy nightmares.
Okay, so it sounds like two, two spaces per unit, okay, how about the mixed use?
We're giving up.
So, it's a standard for, for the commercial. I will say, it, it may be helpful, just for this conversation, for maybe Margaret to get you some data on, like, you know, whether it's in Beverly or wherever, about parking demand for, you know, multifamily housing that's right near transportation, cause I think there's a lot of.
I think she should consider a two-street as an example of.
Yeah, I think there's a lot of science in that area.
Or Willow, Willow is right there, and it's right by the train station.
Yeah, how many, how many, how many parking spaces are there? And some of them are under the building, I mean, they're not underground, but the building is like.
It's raised.
Yeah, this, the first floor is the second story, if that makes sense.
Okay, I'll get more data on that.
And then for the commercial, where I, I forget where it is in our ordinance, but we already have requirements for commercial parking, right?
Do you have, I couldn't, I, do you have it, or do you have, like, it's the building commissioner's evaluation?
That's what I don't know.
The, for the, for commercial parking?
I actually think I'm, I'm dealing with.
No, so up here, it's currently.
An old version, and not the currently coded.
Yes.
Yeah, that's, she's got it on the screen.
There you go.
Put it up there.
Personal is with two hundred square feet, a floor area, office, one bedroom, restaurant, one parking position.
Nice, okay.
So can we just rely on those for the mixed use?
Yeah, wh- what I was thinking is the all, all other permitted uses part is, um, just, you know, there's some leeway in that.
So we should just go with that?
Great.
You wanna add that language?
Sure.
Or just a cross-reference or something?
Just reference the section.
And that's what, two fifty-five, six point one.
Have to repeat it.
Yep.
Right?
So, but, I'm sorry, but if, if, if somebody comes in here with a plan, and they say that they have sufficient parking spaces to accommodate, and they have a civil engineer's report that shows that it's sufficient? But we have a peer-reviewed report that says that it's not sufficient, it's a negotiation, but if they don't concede, it's a grounds to deny?
So this would only apply to the mixed-use component of the project? Which is going to be a special permit, so you're gonna have some discretion in that, and this already is a determination on the all other uses that the planning board makes. Um, and in the bylaw as well, in this section I, there's a placeholder right now for the planning board to be able to issue a special permit for reduction in parking, but it needs standards.
And you're using two-five-five, six point one as the table of parking requirements, which, by the way, already has a multifamily, two spaces, so maybe we don't need to repeat that.
Yeah, I mean, the question was, did you wanna reduce it for this, given the sighting near a train station?
I don't think so. I mean, you've convinced me that that would be a mistake, I think.
I just don't, I don't see how that's gonna work, I mean, there's other issues, but.
I just think, part of it is, let's make it painful, and if this whole thing is to get more people to take the train, which is what M B T A communities, then we're not doing our thing as environmentally responsible people by having two cars per unit?
Right.
Because the thing is, to get them off the street and make them take the train, if that's where they wanna live, so that's my concern. Uh, to me, Boulder Lane is different, there's no T service over there at all.
What do you mean by make it painful, though? Painful on whom?
Everybody, that they gotta, they gotta have one car, like, we, we'll have to ticket people at night, overnight, you know, it's gonna, it's gonna.
But I don't, I don't see that as our role here, I, what I like about the two is that it's two spaces, it's consistent with our existing zone.
Yeah, I, I think, my problem is, how do we distinguish between one?
I, I see what you're saying. Between one area and another area?
Contiguous to each other in the downtown, yeah.
Yeah, I don't know, but see, but that, that's how we're falling off this, is, you know, it, it was pushed as environmentally responsible, getting more people on the train, make it easy for people to commute in and out of the city, or whatever, and, you know, the more we make it easier for them to drive a car, uh, the more we're defeating it. And we're not gonna drive up ridership on the T, not that that's our responsibility to do, but that's the intent of this process.
But the.
I don't think the intent is to drive up ridership, I think the intent is to provide housing for people who take the T.
And you're assuming that, well, you're assuming, though, that we have to adopt what the intent of the statute was in our compliance.
And I don't think.
But that's what we've been doing all night.
I don't think we have to do that.
But I don't think that the intent of the statute was to force people onto the T, I think it was to provide housing for people who use the T, that they can afford.
Oh, okay, I'll, I'll take that.
Or work and lost them. More generally, just to increase the housing stock in eastern Massachusetts is what.
But they're not talking about.
Then they shouldn't have called it the M B T A community, so they should increase housing stock.
Well, I know, but.
Well, this gets us to bicycle storage, which is the next thing.
I do think it'd be helpful if Margaret just gets you some, some data on parking, ju- only because the one thing I'll say is, if the si- you may wanna consider, and it's up to you, but if the science in the on sighting housing near train stations is that, like, you're gonna have a lot of excess parking if you're required to?
Let's find out.
Then that's excess pavement, and you might wanna just think about whether or not you're putting something in place that's gonna then leave.
Well, you have this K, shared parking with a mixed-use development, which allows you to, some flexibility in any way when you're doing the special permit.
Yeah. So you, it's some flexibility. You know, but I expect you'll get questions like this at the public hearing, so it doesn't hurt to think that's Margaret.
Yeah, yeah, it's good to know.
Get you some science on that.
And we can not decide that tonight.
Sorry.
Not that we're deciding anything tonight, anyway.
No, we're not, not voting anything, no.
So it'd be awesome if we were underground, I understand that that's more than we ask for from others, so how does that play out?
Does it have to be underground or under the building?
Under the.
Well, you're, have a thirty-five-foot height requirement that's built into your units per acre, so this is where if you start, do, so, I, I think you could, you're not prohibiting underground, I just, you know, I don't.
But what if we require it?
Um, I think that you may get some pushback on that, because you don't require it anywhere.
So, a developer comes in and says, we're not gonna do that, you mean, pushback from the acceptance by the A G?
Not the A G, but E O H L C.
So if we can't be more demanding in number of spaces, how could we be more demanding in type of spaces or location space?
Well, we're not boards meeting in.
Well, if you require underground, no, 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 what Margaret said was, we've got two as a maximum elsewhere in our zoning, so we can't go over two, right, that's our cap, that's our ceiling. So wouldn't you interpret that as, well, we don't require underground parking anywhere else, so how do we require it here?
I don't.
And that's not a maximum, that's a, that's a requirement, so you can have three, you just can't go under two, is the way I read that.
No, but you can't, what I'm saying is, I, I don't think you can require, you couldn't require three.
We couldn't require three at Boulder, for example.
No, 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 but, but.
I think that if you.
But if Boulder did three.
Say, these projects have to provide underground housing, and multifamily other places in town does not have to provide underground parking, that, that may be an issue. And again, I, I think the more of the mandatory requirements that you put in here, the more you run a risk that the state's gonna say, you've made this prohibitive in some way or another, like, is this site even suitable? Are both sites suitable for underground housing, I mean, under, sorry, underground parking, you know, I think you can express a preference for it, it may be that they need to do something like that in order to get the parking on site, I don't, I wouldn't recommend that you make a requirement of the bylaw.
Okay.
Agreed.
Bicycle storage, can you also find out how many bicycle storage units, or bike racks, or storage units, or whatever, that have been put into places built recently, with transit access and all that?
Yeah, I didn't know why there was a, there was a, a number of units specified, I mean, shouldn't it just be, there should be covered bike parking, no matter what?
Right.
Well, I mean, you could have a three-unit multifamily, are you gonna require that they have?
A little shed, I, I, yeah.
I don't know, I'm, I'm asking, but I think.
Bicycles, yeah, sure.
I'm, no, I'm just saying, I think that's where it comes from, you know.
So do you wanna check out the number of units?
Wait, we're gonna, we're talking about requiring a three-unit building to put in bicycle storage?
No, right now, it reads it.
Bike rack, why not?
Well, you need a little shed with the door on it.
Covered parking, bicycle parking spaces.
Cause that's not a bike rack, that's a covered parking bicycle.
If you had a bike rack undercover, it's a.
Well, thi- this, the way this reads now, it has to be integrated into the structure of the building, so you would be.
So that could be a hook you screw in and you hang your bike from it, in the garage.
No, it's typically a, a room where you can go in and lock your bike up at night.
A room, yes, inside, yeah.
That's what, they, they'll usually put those in the basement or bottom.
First floor.
First floor.
So I think the question is, are you gonna require that of, say, a three-unit?
Yeah, well, what I'm saying is, that's a requirement of an actual build-out, that what, what we're saying, we're not saying you gotta put a metal bike rack out front. We're saying, if you build a three-unit building, you need to have covered space for bicycle, bicycle storage.
We don't say how much, how big.
I, I'm saying, are we gonna actually require that for a three-unit building?
I think we should, I think we should, yeah. There's enough bikers around here. See this ball?
Come pass them on the street.
I, I, I think that, I, I'm in agreement that the, the number of units should be higher before we start making structural requirements like that.
Should be higher than twenty?
It should be higher than three.
No, Rick's saying, take it out completely.
Take out the requirement.
Dan's saying, leave some amount.
Any multifamily development.
So, so you, so what do you think, five units or more should have?
I think any.
I think any.
Isn't that the point of this law?
Yeah, any, any multifamily, for, for multifamily or mixed use developments, covered parking, bu- bicycle spaces should be integrated into the structure. I don't see what that's a, you could just put a shed roof out on the place.
A shed, okay, yeah.
Okay. Cause if you're living in an apartment, where are you gonna put your bike? I mean, you carry it up the stairs, I guess, I used to do that.
In the south end, I did, carried up the stairs, yep.
I just, I was.
I think we nailed.
Original just had a threshold that, you know, we were dropping it quite precipitously.
Oh, yeah, I know, I know.
So, we're now on K.
No, we're done with K, I think we had K, I think we took.
We were just at J, now we're on K.
I have an idea, does anybody have any comments on J through U?
Well, I do on L, because, and it's not specific, it's just, how does this relate to the buffers and the setbacks and everything else? It just seems like there's a lot of different dimensional requirements about screening.
That was my question, too.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure they're consistent, so if somebody could. I guess the buffer could be a fence and not a plant.
We had a comment on that, the, um.
I did, I was concerned about the height and the buffer and the depth, and I didn't understand, we're trying to hide this stuff, right? I mean.
Yeah.
So this, L is surface parking adjacent to a public sidewalk, but I share Ann's question, I'm having a, I, I just some, a lay person reading this, right?
Yeah.
I'm having a difficult time reconciling the various buffer requirements.
Right, you've got, you, you help the establishment of trees and shrubs and then you can say a fence or a wall, but it's only six feet, so, I'm like, what?
This is, um.
No less than six feet.
But it's hard to find a wall and common healthy establishment of trees and shrubs.
This is, this is kinda common language in more of a city, an atmosphere, you know, where there's a city where you've got sidewalks.
Yeah.
They want a buffer between parking spaces and the sidewalk, so people walking on the sidewalk aren't gonna get hit by a parked car, you know, parked cars aren't gonna be right adjacent to the sidewalk.
Aren't getting hit. But is, is that likely to happen any?
So, that's where this language comes from, I think that was.
But what, what do we want for, do we have surface parking around the buildings? We want it to be screened from.
So we have, we do have language in our bylaw already, um, the parking area and access driveways, um, I'm sorry, surface, there is some landscape requirement.
Can we say, can we say something like, um, we have a preference for parking that is not butting into residential areas? In other words, if I was thinking about that lot, we had, you've got a buffer from the residential areas, you've got the buildings, and you want the parking to be on that commercial side? Can we go that far in terms of specifying where we would want the surface parking on the lot, or is that overdoing it?
I mean, again, I just think it becomes an issue of, you know, the tighter you make this, the more someone's gonna say this prohibitive, like, we can't design a project that fits all of these different.
It's also, in District One, it's out of place with what the surrounding environment is now.
Right.
There's no screening required for parking now.
With Crosby's.
Uh, e- or even, um, you know, on Village, right? You don't, you just have park, I mean, where do we have screening? For parking?
We, um, say, um, the, the farm down here. So, there, if there's a sidewalk on the street, they would have to adhere to a setback.
Tendercroft, that farm?
Tendercroft, yeah. I'm just saying, if they wanted to put parking close to the, if there's, is a sidewalk on that side or is it the other side?
Other side.
No.
No, it's the other side, but, if there was a sidewalk.
No, but. That's, that's what's in our zoning now, only if there's a sidewalk?
It's only where there's a sidewalk.
Yeah, if there's a sidewalk, they have to adhere to that, um.
The screening.
Screening.
Yeah, so this is only parking adjacent to a public sidewalk.
Yeah.
But there might be public sidewalks within this development.
Well.
Then are they public sidewalks?
They might not be, if they're within the development, they might not be public, they would be internal, but if, if they were to do some kind of improvements.
Maplewood, the internal sidewalks are right up against the street that.
But there are no, there are no public sidewalks now in District One or District Two.
We can take this out.
Right?
Not.
There are, aren't there on Main Street, public sidewalks?
No, 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 the, the sub-districts.
Yes.
None of them is.
Oh, no, no.
Yeah, the site. I mean. Public sidewalk around here.
I mean, I don't think there's a public sidewalk on that smaller lot either, right?
No.
No.
Okay, so, we're, this is just academic.
It, it s- really is, I think it was just included as, you know.
So, are we gonna delete L? Just, just leave it?
Yeah, you can leave it in, cause it really won't impact this particular development.
Okay.
So you're leaving.
It's fine. Oh, it's a pr- a bigger problem.
Come on, Em.
Okay.
Can we ask the climate action team for what their recommendation would be for asphalt surfacing? Like, um, it, uh, can we?
Yeah, good idea.
Can we specify, like, that there's a porous kind that drains well and, can we get specific like that?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, I wouldn't put like a commercial product name, but, I think you can say, you know.
Brand name, not a brand name, but a.
You know, preference for eco-friendly, blah, blah, blahs, whatever.
Yeah, so long as, um, yeah, I mean, so long as.
So can, I reach out to them and ask them to do that?
Would you, that would be wonderful.
Yeah.
I think we should consider having them read this and see what they would suggest.
Yeah, I would agree.
I mean, I think.
Maybe on the bicycle storage, too.
Yeah, and I, I think, you know, once you have it where, you know, obviously for the forty-eight-five process, the way this works is, you're gonna submit it to the select board to initiate the actual amendment, they're gonna send it back to you to a public hearing. At the point that you're ready to say to the select board, like, we're initiating this as a bylaw amendment, we're ready to have it come back to us for a public hearing, other boards and committees are, should take a look at it and give you their comments.
And we wanna do that so we can have a public hearing in September, or we're not gonna make the war.
Yeah. Yeah.
So before it goes to the select board, so we can.
Yeah.
They can actually review it.
Sure. Oh, yeah, I just, I just think it's not quite ready because it needs like the finishing touch, maybe after August.
It needs all our conversations.
Yeah, maybe after August meeting, that's all I mean, I just don't wanna waste other folks' time and then have a change.
So, where, where did the, these provisions come from? Are, i- is this a model, or is this, it is, okay?
It's a model.
I mean, some of them are from the model, some of them are out of your zoning bylaw.
So the, and the consultant did that, they took the model language that the state had given them, and then they took parts of our own bylaw.
Okay.
And mimic those.
Which consultant?
That was Gold's.
Okay.
Can I, are we, can we move to O, cause I think N is uncontroversial? Light levels shall meet or exceed the minimum design, could we just say shall meet the minimum design guidelines defined by the blah, 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 blah?
Or exceed.
I, I just, I'm concerned about.
Oh.
High levels of lighting near established single-family residential areas.
Oh, but.
And I think we should, because, and, and another climate action committee thing I'd like to have them speak to, because the house, there's a house built, uh, on my side of town, and the neighbors are really upset about the light glow from that new house into all of their backyards.
Okay, I think you want at least meet.
I think what Dan, what this is trying to say is, if it's five, it could be five, four, three, two, one. Like, it could be better than the minimum.
Right.
I'm not sure I want it to be better than the minimum. I mean, if the, if the minimum is bright and more than the minimum is really bright, I don't want it to be really bright.
No, this would be less, that, what we're saying is, this is, this is saying, if the most you can have, say, is five, whatever, you.
Lumens.
You don't have to go to that, you could have, be at four or three.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah.
That's what that's saying.
Okay, okay, okay.
Anything that's, you gotta do the minimum.
If that's how you read that, that, that works for me.
Minimum or better, right?
You could say at least meet, I think the exceed is confusing, so why don't you say at least meet?
It should be minimum or lower.
Yeah, so if Dan, Dan was suggesting just add at least meet, and then I think.
Well, I'm, the way I read this is, the minimum design guidelines would be, that's what you're supposed to have, but you could go brighter, is how I read how it was, and I'm like, nah.
I think what it was intended to say is to do the last part.
Particularly since these standards are written by people who are illuminating parking lots in Ohio, so I just wanna be clear that I don't think that's a good idea.
I read it that way, too, Ann, so we need to clear that up, so that we're not ambiguous.
Yeah, if we can come up with some language that, yeah. Okay. Fencing and planting on dumpsters, stormwater management.
Oh, no, my mechanicals, I had a question about, um, I, I know there's been some problem with development and, uh, ground vibration. Is there anything that we can put in there about, um, not causing ground vibration? Because we're building inside of another neighborhood and we're gonna be having heavy mechanical systems to, um, satisfy heating and cooling.
Can we say that the mechanical equipment has to be on the rooftop?
I mean, I, I.
It gets hope, it gets rid of the ground vibration problem.
Yeah.
I, you know, I would talk to Rich about that, I don't know if there are things that traditionally have to be on the ground or can't.
But as far as like, making it prohibitive so that the state would hate it, the, you don't think that putting it, requiring it on the rooftop would be a problem?
Only if it's like something you can't do, that's why I was saying, it's a guidance for Rich about, like, electrical inspector.
Yeah, right, 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 yeah, yeah, yeah.
Isn't that gonna be covered by our building code?
Yeah, I mean, and the other thing is, you can't, that's why I say talk to your inspectors on that one.
Okay, Margaret, can you?
Yep.
Check that one?
Cause you don't wanna have anything that's inconsistent with the building code or that practically just isn't doable or.
Okay. Stormwater, utilities, underground?
Especially, cause again, well, the other thing, too, is keep in mind, this is gonna apply if someone theoretically put in three units as as much as it is ten, and if somebody puts in three units, they're gonna have an air conditioning unit on the side, they're not gonna have an air conditioner.
Right, or a heat pump or something.
I mean, are, are most of these meant to be aesthetic? That.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not familiar with the concern you're talking about, but I, we can think about the best way to address it, I have, I just haven't had that come up in anything yet, the vibration issue, so.
Okay.
Underground utilities, everybody good?
Yep.
Sidewalks shall be required to connect parking areas and buildings, fine, right?
Yeah, it's a design on it.
Again, it's a paving thing and echo paving, do you wanna run that one by the climate action team, too?
Yeah.
Sensities, we've already discussed ad nauseam. Affordability requirements.
I have one question in sub-paragraph three.
Sure. Can we do sub-paragraph one first?
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, this requirement is applicable to all multifamily one and mixed use developments, I don't understand what that one is.
I figured it's a typo.
Oh, okay, so, never mind, I thought I just missed something. Okay.
So in three A, why are we saying maximum, why don't we just say?
Because the state guidelines will require a maximum and they're gonna wanna see that.
Yes, but the, the state guideline maximum is ten percent.
So it should be a minimum.
Why can't, why can't we just say ten percent?
I mean, I guess, you can, the problem we're having is like, for examples, I forget which community, they said at least ten percent, and then the state said, well, that leaves room for more, so we have just been recommending.
Yeah, but why don't you just say ten percent?
Let's just say ten percent.
Sure, that way it doesn't give people the option to do eight percent.
Um, I think the only problem with saying ten percent is that you have to, my memory is that this references back to your, hold on. I think the reason we set a maximum is because of potentially you could have a percentage unit situation.
Right, if you have twenty-five units, how do you do it, if you have ten percent?
Two and a half units, okay.
So.
Cause you can't go over and you can't go under.
You can't go to three, you'd have to go, so that, I think that, you know, that's why we recommended it, the way that we recommended it.
Okay.
I'm sure you could account for that some other way, you could say it has to have ten percent, provided however, if rounding up's gonna take you over, you round down.
Yeah, no, no, this is fine, it's fine.
Well, so, if they, if they say a maximum of ten percent,
If you have one.
and it's three units, right, and five units.
So this only applies to ten or more, so if you go back up to one, it only applies to ten or more, so theoretically, the, you have one, like, it wouldn't.
I just don't like the language, a maximum of, because it seems to invite less than the ten percent we require.
Yes, me too.
Yeah, yeah, I had the same response.
Well, except, so isn't, let me just, and maybe we need to make this more clear, hold on a second.
I, I think if, if we just say ten percent, right, and then we get into an issue with a fraction.
But the, the next sentence talks about that.
We'll deal with that, right?
The, the next, the next sentence talks about that, for the purpose of the, c- c- but calculating, wahda, wahda, fractional units should be rounded up.
Fractional unit, yeah, yeah.
Not to exceed ten percent.
Yeah, that's fine.
So why don't we just leave it, we get rid of a maximum of and just leave it at ten percent?
Yeah, sure, you can.
Yeah, okay, yes, perfect.
So take out the maximum of.
Yep. I don't have anything else.
Development standards, affordable units, disparate, that all seemed good to me. Oh, and, the electric vehicle charging stations, by the way, speaking of parking areas and stuff. This references.
How did I get there, wait, where are you?
This, this re-.
Here, four C.
It, interesting to me that EV charging is referenced under affordable units, but not anywhere else in the ordinance, whereas, perhaps it should be a requirement.
Everywhere.
Everywhere.
So that may be, like, just like bike parking, it's something that you could put in that section, require some amount.
But we might wanna put it in earlier where we have parking, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So that's what I mean, like, in the section, the word talks about, like, you have that bike parking.
So, do we want, do we want a minimum of electrical?
Can we, can we move that up?
Well, I wouldn't take it out of here, but I, I would, you could put it in.
Right, so, exactly.
As well.
But this just references it casually, and I'm wondering if when Margaret is doing the research on parking and multifamily and blah, 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 what's the typical, you know, where people are asking for electric vehicle charging stations for multifamily units, what, how, how do they figure that out? Is it one per every five units, one for every ten units, how mu- how do they do that? And then we can add that.
I mean, I don't.
What do they do at the Willows, cause they, they have electric charging?
They have, they have them, and I don't know if, if Hamilton requires it per, for multifamily or what?
They didn't do it under three A, to be honest, I mean, that's the point, right?
They did that on a, uh.
I mean, so I'm gonna contradict myself now and say, look, we just did this beautiful master plan, and we're putting forth a bylaw, which I completely understand from legal perspective, can't incorporate any of that, cause we haven't rolled that out anywhere else in town, but it strikes me as just like, what are we doing? This doesn't incorporate any of the values or the, the things that we just did under this shiny, beautiful document, and I would invite.
I disagree with that, I do think it does incorporate some of those ideas. And I'm suggesting that it should incorporate a few more of them, like electric vehicle charging.
And renewable energy.
Right.
And so the question, I think, is, and it's not gonna be for tonight, but this is why I think we need more participation in this, is like, And it's not gonna be for tonight, but this is why I think we need more participation in this, is like, man, I sure would invite a challenge from Beacon Hill. Over three A things that provide their housing to their executive guidelines. That mandate renewable energy, cause all be on Fox twenty-five that night talking about that. I mean, that is ridiculous. If, if we're gonna take our master plan and have those things reflected here in full. Go along with their plan and the executive's gonna tell us that we can't impose, that's ridiculous.
Just to clarify, what do you mean by renewable energy? Like, are you saying you wanna require that they have solar or?
Yeah. Require that they have E V, E V chargers?
No, I think you can have EV charging stations. I think that's fine. I don't think E O H L C has an issue with that. Um, but I, I'm, I wanna understand what you're talking about. So, like, are you saying you want these projects to, I mean, cause there's also a building code.
Well, you, you run into the developability thing too, because if it's in the woods, you're not gonna have solar.
Yeah, and you, you do, cause there is like the stretch energy code, there's, there are building code issues as well, so I wanna understand more about what you're talking about.
Parking, do they require electric, that the building's all electric?
Not.
I think these run into the same problem as requiring more than ten percent affordability. You're imposing hurdles to development. That aren't in the statute and it's more likely to get struck down as being noncompliant.
But again, noncompliant with the guidelines.
But what you do.
With three A.
Okay, that's a, that's a different conversation.
Ultimately, if, if you pass this and E O H L C says, we're not gonna certify it as compliant. You're gonna be in the same bucket either way unless a court says, unless a court strikes the guidelines. And I understand the point that you're making, I'm not disagreeing with it. It's, it's a well thought out point, but you're either gonna be deemed compliant or not, and you're either gonna benefit from being compliant. Or you're gonna suffer the consequences for being noncompliant. And that's E O H L C, based on their guidelines, unless a court says otherwise.
I, I just think, like, it, we're in the, and I'm, we're not gonna belabor it tonight. We can all go back to our corners and. Put it in our pipe and smoke it. But basically, we've been put into this terrible dichotomy. Where we're either going with the flow or we're thumbing our nose at the state saying, you can't touch us. And we're, we're home rule, whatever that means.
I think we're trying to.
Dave.
Red a needle here.
We, we have this conversation every time we meet about this. So I.
This is a new conversation. Respectfully, Peter, this is a new conversation. It's about a consideration about whether or not there's some middle ground. That we can pursue that is. Closer to what the articulated vision is for this town.
Well, that would be the small communities zoning thing that we're not eligible for because we don't have enough land.
So, what I'm trying to say, Dave, is the more of these things we put in and make requirements for, right? Like, let's say these EV charging stations, the more expensive it is to make these developments, right? The, the tension between this is, the more of these requirements are, the less affordable these things become, right?
Completely understand the point.
And ninety percent of these units already are not gonna be affordable. So this isn't an affordable housing act. And my concern is that the more requirements that we are putting in as an option. The more likely it is we've run out of compliance, right? That if they're seen as hurdles to development.
It depends, I don't think an EV charging station.
No, it just depends, it depends how many and.
No, I think a re, yes, I think a reasonable amount of EV charging stations is fine. I wasn't clear on what other kind of renewables Dave was talking about, and I'd wanna think about that, and I'd want you to consult with your building commissioner. Again, because we do have the stretch energy code, we have legislation that deals with, you know, requiring. Um, electric first gas and all those kinda things that require specific analysis. So that's why I was just trying to figure out what else you were talking about.
And there are provisions in here that, that encourage, I think, renewable energy. They just ask it to be, they make an exception to the height requirement.
Exactly, like, you're giving flexibility for those things. You're encouraging them versus requiring them, which is two different things.
So could we encourage them to do things like gray water management, not using irrigation systems? All those things are gonna save groundwater to make the place a little bit more efficient.
We already, we already say no sprinklers, right?
We did say that in this.
That's a general bylaw, right, or no?
That's a general.
I'm, no, I'm asking. Where do you say no sprinklers?
No, we don't have that. We allow sprinklers.
Oh, okay, I was asking, cause I, cause I don't say it.
In the subdivision, we don't have that?
They're not, they're not, they're, they are allowed.
I don't think your subdivision rules or regulations have been updated since like nineteen.
We're working.
Eighties.
Eighties, something. I have a picture in my head of what they look like.
Type down.
Water commissioner says no sprinklers.
Okay.
In this development, in this zoning area.
Anywhere, anywhere.
But right now, you can do them. So we're, we're asking this to do something that is not.
Permit, we can say no. In other words, we can say, no, we don't want them there. If we.
But we're doing multifamily by right, so those things.
Right.
So I think something like that, if, if you really want things like that, I'll go back and take another look at how the guidelines relate to that. But I think if you start layering in all sorts of these kinds of requirements on this project, that no one else is subject to. E O H L C may take issue with that. Because they're gonna say you're making these projects harder, more expensive to build, or unlikely they will get built then.
Well, it'd be cheaper if you didn't have to do a sprinkler system.
Correct.
No, 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 but look, the, the legal advice or the legal counsel is clear.
Yeah.
But the, one of the things I love about serving on this board is that I can finally turn off my legal brain for a minute and act like something else. And so my something else sitting in this chair for the next six months until somebody ejects me from it is. There is a, we are gonna propose, I get that we're, we could be technically out of compliance with the executive branch. But we're gonna impose zoning that could potentially increase our housing stock by twenty-five percent, and it's not gonna be consistent. Or let's consider whether or not it should be like in step with the, the master plan. Which is a beautifully constructed lawful document. That to me makes sense.
And recommends a sprinkler ban.
And if the E O C, if, if the executive branch looks at us and says, um, sorry, that doesn't fly. That's a fight that I would stand with everyone else and take on. I'm not here to say we should thumb our nose at three A and say it's a constitutional overstep. But I am here to say, like, something that is reasonable and our discretion, consistent with our master plan.
We should put in.
That supports the values of this community as articulated, that provides for the possibility of housing of the amount that the state has articulated. And the executive has the audacity to tell us that that's not. That's not compliant.
To the mat.
I'll go pro bono on that case.
Right, so sprinkler ban.
So I will say, and I just, these are the guidelines. It just says zoning will not be deemed compliant with section three A's requirements. That multifamily housing be allowed as of right. If the zoning imposes requirements on multifamily housing that are not generally applicable to other uses, the following examples are. A requirement that multifamily housing meet higher energy efficiency standards than other uses. A requirement that multifamily housing achieve a third party certification that's not required for other uses. So for example, if you made it lead or something, yeah. Or a requirement that multifamily use must be combined with commercial other uses. So you can't require that there's a mixed use component of everything. So I'm just, I'm telling you the guidelines.
About sprinkler bans.
Well, I don't know what they mean by higher energy efficiency standards. Is a sprinkler ban a?
No, it's not an energy efficiency, it's a water conservation.
They've given, I'm giving you the guidance.
We're, we're, we're subject to a mandatory water restriction. I think we're completely within our authority to say.
We're not, though. Where, what are you referring to?
That may go beyond zoning anyway.
Where does this sprinkler ban?
Irrigation.
That's.
Okay, but in general, I don't know that that's really even a zoning concern at all, like anywhere in a zoning bylaw to say you can't use sprinklers. That's a water resource issue. It, it may have other implications, but you know.
We can handle that outside of this conversation?
Yeah, I mean, we could pull up the bylaw, but the sprinkler ban that you're talking about only is in effect if certain conditions have. Been triggered, like they've voted, we're in a drought condition or something like that.
It's not if you're in a drought condition, it's mandatory for the summer months. And you have to have a watershed for certain.
Oh, I'm talking about the Wenham bylaw, I'm not talking about the Sutcliffe.
So again, if you're already regulating something through a general bylaw, you're not gonna regulate it through zoning.
Can I ask a general question about this? Do we have, I, I thought we did. But is there something somewhere in this proposal that says, this applies to the multifamily overlay district? Um, but it otherwise has to comply with the rest of our zoning, right? So this isn't meant to be comprehensive.
I remember seeing that.
Isn't it, is it catchall in there, right?
So what's, what it, no, what, does it?
It says that somewhere.
No, I'll tell you what it said.
I hope it does, I wanna make sure it does.
I'll tell you what it says. So, and you guys can decide if that's adequately capturing the purpose of what you want. But it's in, if you go, I don't, if you go to, it's section B. I'm sorry, C. It weren't talks about the overlay district.
Section C of what?
In, in like this, in the multifamily.
Page four.
Yeah, it says, the regulations for use dimension and all other provisions of the zoning bylaw.
Okay.
Governing the respective underlying zoning district shall remain in full force and effect, except for uses allowed as of right in the district. Where the multifamily authorizes use, I'm sorry, where the multifamily overlay district. Authorizes the use, dimensional controls or other provisions not otherwise allowed in the underlying district, the provisions of this shall control.
Yeah, okay, good.
Not what you want, we can tweak it.
No, I, that's, I just, we kinda skipped over that. I wa, I wanted to make sure it was there.
We just, we didn't skip it, cause we made the correction of Nick Mod, yeah.
We just didn't talk about the substance. So can we talk about W, which is mixed use?
I think this is one that's important, actually.
Um, first of all, it, I don't understand C. I don't know if that's a typo or not.
What?
Where it says, personal services, retail, experiential retail, and then it goes into experiential retail?
I think I had a question about that as well.
Okay.
So that didn't, that didn't come from me.
So my general question about this section is, do we wanna target mixed use more narrowly than what we're doing here? I noticed we don't include industrials, so does that solve our earlier problem?
I, I mean, I think you just wanna be very clear that, um. These are the only types of non-residential uses that'll be allowed as part of a mixed use project. If they're not listed, they're not allowed. And be very clear with what you want. I encourage you to use words that already exist on your use chart, define terms that are already in your bylaws. So that everyone knows what these things mean. And if you need to add a new definition, you certainly can.
Okay, so where did this, for ground floor, where did this stuff come from?
Yeah, where did this, did you write this, Margaret, or did it come from a?
This came mostly from the state's example.
Okay, but edu, and in B, educational uses, wouldn't that include like dancer, studios, music studios?
So I would, I think you took, Margaret, I don't know if you can, can you pull up your use table? There you go, sorry, okay. So I mean, you guys can kinda look at how you call out uses now, and I would just recommend they use defined terms that are, or, you know, that are the same.
And then, commercial.
Kennel?
I'm gonna hurt you. Don't you dare say that word again.
This is what we're picking cheese from?
Yeah. All of that is commercial?
This is all considered commercial uses and this is how you can do it or not do it. It's not allowed.
We don't, we don't say commercial in here.
Do we do?
Where?
What are you talking about? Oh, you're right, we say retail. So I mean, it's a.
That's fine, I don't think we wanna say.
Well, I don't think you want commercial, cause you're not trying to grab all of your.
We wanna list the use, not the general concept.
So you wanna say restaurant or bed and, whatever, you know, not bed and breakfast, but like, you know. You, you wanna call it the ones, you want banker, financial agency, you know, you wanna specifically list.
Right.
In terms that you normally use, the uses, and we can be very clear. If it's not listed, you know, it's not allowed.
Instead of focusing on, well, what do we think is okay in this mixed use? I mean, restaurant?
Can, can I suggest we go for the other, from the other way? What do we think is not, because?
I was, that's where I started, and then I thought, it's a long list.
I think it's a shorter list.
The shorter list.
I don't think we want industrial, right, in the mixed use?
No.
None of those.
Boat, boat storage.
Right.
None of those.
Boat storage.
Well, I.
No private garages, other than for the residents.
We could have a swimming pool.
But I mean, what, what do people want on this ground floor? I think it's eateries?
I think it's easier to do what we do want, honestly, cause I did, I did that same mental.
Yeah, yeah, so, all right.
We did do a survey, like, if we each do this and then Margaret could collect them and see how this rates out? I mean.
You mean for the public?
Long, no, no, from us.
You can, you just won't be able to discuss it.
Can we just look at the list here and see if there's anything on this list that we don't want?
Okay.
Right.
And then from there, we can look at our list. I mean, someone's gonna have to take this list and make it match that list.
Educational uses, if it's somebody's not paying property taxes.
Okay.
All right, strike it.
Any objection to D E or F?
For-profit educational uses because like human, those kinda places.
Tutoring services.
Can we say for-profit?
Sure.
Yeah, for-profit.
What were you asking, Dan?
I was just gonna say, does anybody object to D E or F?
No.
Okay.
I don't. A question on D, can we, can we limit it? Uh, this is gonna be super technical, but can we, like, like not a Starbucks?
No, you can't. There's case law in Massachusetts that you cannot prevent, um, chain restaurant. There, there were some cases down the Cape where they tried to prevent. Chain restaurants, and they said you can't. So.
But without a drive-through.
You can say without a drive-through, certainly, yes.
Community space. Without a walk-up window too, right? Cause that just puts people on the street, is that okay?
You wanna ban walk-up windows?
Well, like, you go and get.
No, I just didn't hear you.
It's an ice cream shop. You wanna walk up and get your cola?
I just, I didn't hear what you're saying, if you wanted them or didn't want them.
Drip all over the books.
So, in, in C, as it's written now. Are those meant to be three different things? Margaret?
Oh. Hmm, I don't think so.
Personal services.
So you have, right, so you have service establishment, personal, right now, you have retail, which is something else.
Personal establishment.
Well, it says service established, common, personal.
Where?
What does that include in your view? Was like a spa?
Massage parlor?
I think it might, hold on, I think that might be defined.
Revere move marble?
Maybe?
Is it like a?
It's, I think that's, um, defined in your bylaw. Give me one second and I'll tell you. Hold on.
It's, um. Don't wanna encourage like.
You know, where the, um.
Delights?
Delights, right next to delights.
Ice cream?
They're putting in a body art establishment.
A what?
A body, a tattoo.
Tattoo parlor.
Who's calling body art, well, we call them body artist.
I think in Wenham, we refer to them as body artist.
Yes. So, I believe in your bylaw, I'll just tell you, I think we looked at this relative to, yeah, so personal service establishment is a defined term.
What is it?
It's on the chart, but it's a facility providing personal services such as a hair salon, barber shop, tanning facility, dry cleaner. Print shop or photography studio or the like.
Wow, so personal services includes dry cleaners, cause that's.
So again, you could say personal service excluding dry cleaners, although I mean, if you have a whole bunch of people living there, it might be a convenience for the folks that live there. Those are questions for you, but it is defined. And that's why I just, again, say, you know, let's try to stick with defined terms in terms that you regularly use.
So, so personal services retail is a term on here, is that what we're saying?
Well, personal service establishment is defined in here, retail establishment is a facility selling goods or services.
Right.
Whether or not specifically listed in the table of use regulations.
C is really C and another paragraph, because it mushes it all together.
That's what I was trying to.
And maybe a third paragraph, cause I don't know if dance or exercise studios, music studios, photography studios are included in.
Well, photography studio is actually listed under personal service establishment.
Okay, so why don't we just say personal service establishments?
And just leave it at that?
Yeah. Right?
Then we want retail.
And retail is a separate thing.
Correct. Personal service establishment and retail establishment.
Do, do we need a subcategory of experiential retail?
Can I just ask if retail has to find in, is retail different from a restaurant?
Yeah, so a restaurant.
Defined, I know what a restaurant is, but.
Yeah, yeah, no, yeah, so you have, you have personal service, you have restaurant, you have retail.
Excellent, okay, good. So retail.
Mini golf, experiential retail.
Um, claymation, you know, going in, um.
Those panic room.
Clay things.
Clay, clay dreams.
Wouldn't that just?
Ball, but like when you paint the already made ceramics, sorry, like.
There's one, there was.
Laser, laser tag.
Baby, I don't.
Wouldn't that just be a subclass of retail?
That one isn't defined in here. So I do think if you're gonna throw something in, it's like experiential retail, you should define it.
Okay.
Cause it's not defined.
All right, I, I'm okay with all of those as mixed uses.
Yeah. And the experiential retail obviously isn't gonna include retail that's already listed as a personal service or whatever.
Retail's just selling goods or services, so if you're selling the experience. I think experiential retail's more like you're selling an experience, not just go, like, I'm not just going in and buying a vase, I'm going in and painting a vase that you're then going to. Put in kiln for me.
Do we have to define?
I mean, if you're gonna add a new use, I'd say define it.
Do we want banks?
No.
Why isn't a maker space different from experiential retail?
Cause maker spaces are usually the audit, the artists own studios, like, or, or somewhere where maybe.
Where?
There's shared.
Small scale food production would be like a camera.
Like, if you're an artist, you don't have access to your own kiln, you could go to the maker space. But it's different than like retail public, got it.
M and T.
Salem five.
Where's the Salem five?
Right next to the, the, uh, Gastea.
To post. Next to post.
The Willows is behind it.
Okay, okay, yeah, yeah, yeah. Um, sort of blends into that building.
It does.
Liquor store?
It's just, that's resale.
It's retail.
Do we want that?
Has to get permitted, right? So there'd be an opportunity to say no.
Okay.
Like a liquor licensing.
I had a question about three, if we're there.
Which one?
Uh, three A, access and egress, do we, ki, I know this is stupid, but my immediate thought was, do we need to require that? The access to the, in a mixed use building, that the access to the residential component be locked at the street level? Can we require that?
I would talk to Rich from a building code perspective. I don't know what the, if there's firewall separate, like what there is, but.
Just as a, you know, general matter, to keep the, yeah. So here, it, it has the parking and circulation on the side should be organized, who has to reduce the amount of impervious surface, going to your point. Earlier about paving's features and trying to. How does shared outdoor space match up with the open space requirement?
So I think shared outdoor space is intended to be different. That's intended to be like, you could have a picnic, or you could throw a ball.
Court or.
As opposed to.
But it also says all outdoor space shall count toward the op, the minimum open space requirement. So my question is really, is there anything in here that? If you put the two of them side by side, are there conflicts in what we're asking for? And I, I didn't do that, I, just a question.
We can double check it. I mean, the other, the open space requirement's twenty percent.
Yeah.
Um, and it's pretty broad in what it says it can be used for, but we can read them against each other. That's the kinda thing we would do in the final.
Does one of the open space, uh, suggestions include community gardens for the residents? Is that something we could add as a suggestion? Cause I think that's something that people.
We should put that in. We should put that in the open space section.
Yeah, you should put it in the open space, in the open space part, yeah.
In the open space section, okay, thank you.
The other thing that I found confusing about this is that all outdoor open spaces shall count is a mandate, right? And the sentence before says su- such space may be located on a rooftop, so is that conflicting with the twenty percent open space, which contemplates green space?
I don't know, I mean, if there's a rooftop garden, do you wanna count that to the open space?
That's a question.
You don't have to include this.
I don't know if I can answer that.
Yeah, no, I mean, you guys are-
That's not the question, the question is making sure there's no conflict in-
I, I- I know this, this is a hard exercise, but I think what you're doing is, like, really good, because so much of this did come out of the model and some of it came out of your byline, reading it for like, how it all fits together is great.
And what's the, what, what are we trying to encourage with this open space requirement, is it green space, or is it just places for people to be, or what is it? I, I don't have the answer to that, I'm just asking a question.
Yeah, no, I think it's a good question, like-
I think there might be things in the master plan we could get out on, uh, pull out of that, of suggestions of what that space could be, um, but, I don't know.
I mean, if we're comfortable with roof, it's a multifamily thing, if we're comfortable with rooftop gardens counts, counting as open space, I just don't want the rooftop with nothing on it to count toward open space.
Correct, correct, yes, yes.
So I have a process question. I think we're nearing the end of this, right, so-
We, yes, in fact, we are at the end.
Literally, literally.
That was the last thing.
So, how do we get this across the finish line, what, what are we, what's our plan for this, when do we get another draft, when do we, we're gonna meet in August, right?
Do we need another work?
Are we gonna go through this exercise again in Aug- and what, what is the-
Well, we have the Hamilton planning board coming in August as well, so.
Right.
So what I think makes sense, if it makes sense to you folks, is, you know, Margaret's taking notes, I've taken some notes, let Margaret, you know, mark this up with your comments from tonight. I'll take a look at it, I'll give it that really good final read, so if there's anything new I wanna flag and try to address some of your issues and get it back to you, and then, you know, the next time you're scheduled to discuss it is August eighth, so then it's, it's confirming that changes that you wanted were made, you're not gonna necessarily revisit things that-
But if we're having a public forum, or a public hearing in September, that means this has to be final and ready to go by that meeting.
I mean, you could-
And it's gotta come back from the select board, right?
What?
Yeah.
Go to the select board and come back.
And then come back.
Technically, but yeah.
Before our public hearing?
Yeah, so the way forty A five works, Tesla, you, you initiate it by filing with the select board, they have fourteen days, I mean, cuz anyone can initiate it, so if it was a citizen's petition.
Alright, alright.
So if our, if our meeting in September is what date, a regular meeting, is what date?
September is the twelfth, is your regular meeting?
So two weeks before that is the end of August.
I mean, do you want, so today's-
I just feel like going through this exercise tonight, that w- we're not gonna be in a position to approve a final version on August eighth, am I wrong about that?
No, I don't think you're wrong, I think we might have to have a special meeting.
So do you want- Do you want to meet?
Their work session.
Yeah, I mean, do you wanna meet like on the first or something, which is a week before the meeting, you know, it's two weeks out from now, I'm just throwing dates out to then go over kind of the results of tonight, so by the time you have that meeting on the eighth and take input from the public.
I'm, I'm not gonna be available for, on that day, but-
I mean, I just, I just meant some interim time before the eighth.
I'm just wondering, or after the eighth, like, are we-
Yeah, could we, could we have another one of these special meetings, like, a week after the eighth, what is that, the fifteenth?
That's the fifteenth.
Yeah, cuz you, I don't think on the eighth you're going to be going over the details of this, I don't think there'll be an opportunity.
No.
We should talk about what that's gonna be there for me.
When, when, what, you're available, you don't have availability that week or you're away.
I could do the- I could do the twenty-second.
Of August.
Of August. Um, I can't do the fifteenth, I might be able to do the fifteenth by Zoom, but-
I'm not sure I could do the twenty-second, I gotta look and see when I-
Or it doesn't have to be on a Thursday.
No, I was just throwing a date out, basically.
Yeah, right.
Whatever you guys agree on.
I think you're right, though, that you're gonna want at least one more meeting in there, so say you have your next meeting on the eighth, you get some big concepts, input from the public, and talk to Hamilton, and then you're gonna need like another meeting sooner than later, just to really finalize it and say, this is what we're-
Twenty-second.
Could we get the draft before the meeting of the eighth, so that we just know what we're thinking individually?
Oh, of course.
So when we speak to that group on the eighth, we have a better concise idea of what our plan is?
Yeah, so, I'll work with Margaret, you'll definitely get another draft before the eighth.
So if we get another draft before the eighth, we can all go through it, we can meet on the eighth, and I think it's gonna be more streamlined than tonight, cuz we've, or-
I hope so.
Well, the eighth, we have Hamilton here.
Right.
We're not gonna get into the weeds on this, plus we have forty-seven definitive-
I'm not gonna get into weeds on this.
So we should, are we gonna talk about that, the Hamilton?
Yes, we need to discuss what the format's gonna be, absolutely.
No, no, but I do think we need to, so we need to have another meeting, and it can't be the eighth, in my opinion, it needs to be another day, when we-
It would be better if it were before the eighth.
Correct, yes.
Although, let me just ask, and, cuz I don't disagree that it'd be good to have one, but if you're only gonna have one more, do you want to have it after the eighth, so that you're finalizing it with an eye to whatever additional comments you get on the eighth?
Well, it might be-
Or you make me two.
It might be, it might be better to might be wiser. It's better and wiser, it might be wiser to wait till we hear from Hamilton about what they're doing before we finalize things. Which would argue for after the eighth.
Don't we sort of know what Hamilton is doing? In broad strokes.
Does Hamilton know what it's doing?
So, I just, I thought the meeting on the eighth with Hamilton was so that they could, if anyone from their plan were wanting to give input on your draft.
Which we won't have unless we have a meeting before the eighth.
What if we got the draft back from Rob and Margaret, and we just posted that dress, saying, this is a draft, it's a working draft, and then we could have commentary from the public, I think, on the eighth, if anybody had comments about that.
Wouldn't that be a comment, a public hearing, if you did it that way?
So it wouldn't be a public hearing, it could be a public meeting in which you take and you ha- you allow-
Just like we did tonight.
Yeah, it wouldn't be a public hearing in the sense that you're not gonna follow like, you know, posting notice type requirements, but-
When you said posting, that's why I wanted-
Yeah, sorry. Uh, so, if we had that, then we had feedback, and then if we met after the eighth, we could have an eye towards, alright, we're gonna finalize a product following the eighth.
We'd have to have another meeting.
Right.
Like on the f- a week from the eighth, on the fifteenth?
Um.
Well, I mean, the, so-
That week, not the, so that day.
That-
The-
Fourteenth would be better for me.
Public hearing, they're gonna, the, so the, just to keep in mind timing-wise, right, so you, you need to have a, you, it's sometime in September, I'm assuming the end of September at this point, you're gonna wanna have your forty A five planning board public hearing.
Right.
Which means it has to be, um, published in the newspaper at least fourteen days in advance, with two cons- two success, so-
Right.
Just keeping in mind, like, and what the day it goes in the newspaper, the version you're gonna consider needs to be done and available.
Right.
Because the legal ad obviously says that you can come and review the proposal at town hall or online or whatever, so, you know, it's, it's not, it's-
Right. Right.
That's gonna be in September.
Yeah, so if you're planning-
And you have to back in time.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, you have to back in time, so you have to get it to the, you have to say to the select board, this is what we're proposing, you know, they send it technically, they send it back to you. Um, if you're not expecting that the select board's gonna change anything in what you're proposing and what they, you know, what, which they probably, well, they might have recommendations, they probably, I don't know, but I guess what I'm, bless you. I guess what I'm saying is, you don't necessarily have to wait for them to refer to you to put the posting out for the public meeting. Timing-wise.
Does, does this board have to vote to submit something to the select?
Yeah, so under forty A five, the planning board can initiate a zoning bylaw amendment, so this board would have to vote and say, like, this is the zoning bylaw amendment, we have voted to recommend.
And we need to do that by the end of August, which I think we determined.
Yes, yes, so I think you need to do that by the end of August in order to get your September public hearing going, right.
So-
And are you available on July thirty-first?
I can make a date work after the eighth, I just don't think I can make the fifteenth work.
Could you make a date work before the eighth?
That would, uh, before the eighth, um-
Like next Thursday?
I don't know. Um, are we gonna have, I mean, would we have the draft back in time?
When are you, when, what's your schedule these days for?
Um, I'm here next Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday.
Yeah, I mean, I think we could get it to you for that meeting, I don't know how far in advance we could get it to you.
Yeah.
If you did-
That's why I think it makes sense to do it after the eighth, instead of before the eighth.
Yeah, so what if, we, we do get you the draft by the eighth, we'll have that draft by the eighth, and then on the eighth, you have your meeting, the draft will be available, people can talk about it, but then have an- another meeting after the eighth, as soon as you can, to decide this is the draft that we're gonna submit to the select board, and to initiate the process.
Yeah, but you can't do the fifteenth.
Just, I could do the fourteenth.
Great.
Great, perfect. Can everybody else do August fourteenth?
Sure. Yep.
It's better for me anyway, cuz my kid comes in the fifteenth.
Okay.
Um, I know, we've been going for a long time, but this Hamilton meeting, I didn't wanna put in an email, cuz I don't wanna violate the open meeting law. Time is of the essence, I mean, jeez, I would rather meet with the select board, our select board, what's, what are we gonna learn from Hamilton?
What's the goal?
What's the goal of that meeting, other than they got reamed out at a public community?
To say that we did it.
I, which is-
We're gonna make a presentation, are they gonna make a presentation, are we gonna have general questions that we want to discuss?
Do we have to post it jointly?
No, we have to post our meeting, and then they'll post their meeting.
Could we just invite, do we have to invite the whole board, or can we just invite the chairman?
It's not invite, I mean, and I don't wanna get in the middle of this, but if you're having a public meeting, anybody who wants can come, so-
Right, right, of course, but-
But they did, he sort of did invite their planning board.
But it doesn't have to be the whole board. You did.
Yep, and they, they all said they could come, so the August eighth meeting, now, if you-
Maybe we're hearing from them what they're doing.
I have zero interest in being told by anybody in Hamilton what we should be doing.
Not, not by what we're doing, but they can just tell us what their thinking is.
And I have a limited interest in that as well, because I have a much bigger interest to hear what the select board thinks about this draft. I have a much bigger interest in hearing what, what our other boards and committees do.
I don't, I don't disagree with that.
So then why are we doing it?
Checking it off on the list.
It's a checkbox. Because we have heard over and over again from people who are giving public comment that they wonder why we haven't talked to Hamilton.
And we've tried, and now this is-
And I called the Hamilton chair, and we had a nice conversation, and she encouraged us to do an amicus, and we've decided that's not appropriate for this town, so the question then is, do we have anything else that we can accomplish with them, and I think you're asking good questions about that. I am still very vague about what it is they're plan, planning to do, right, and how this fits with it, cuz they butt up against each other, so would be useful to know, and if the answer is, we don't know yet, then the conversation can be pretty brief.
That's cool, but then let's be able to pivot to more productive topics, I'll just say this, I watch their commu- and, and I'm not angry at anybody here, or upset or whatever, I just, I, I watched their two-hour-long communal forum, and, um, I don't want that happening in this room.
Is that the same flavor as ours?
I don't wanna pass the mic where, where there's a detour into a forty-five-minute conversation about school consolidation, and then a pivot back where we're talking about these other things, like-
Well, I am gonna chair the meeting.
And I am glad you are, because I think you will run a tight ship, but I, I still think, are we gonna allow public comment? Are we, what is the agenda, like, for this meeting? And what is the purpose, and I think we, if we, if we can't, we're just wasting time otherwise, cuz we've somehow-
We don't have a lot of time.
If we're just sharing information, we sh- we don't have public comment. It's board to board.
Yeah, my understanding was this was gonna be a bullet point on our agenda, it wasn't gonna be our whole meeting, right?
Right, so it's just, it's like, could you just tell us what you're doing, cuz people are asking us what you're doing, you get ten minutes, you get ten minutes, tell us what you're doing.
Yeah. This is what we're doing.
Have you watched the public forum yet in June?
I haven't watched the Hamilton.
But the public forum-
I'd encourage you to take a look at that.
But, I mean, we had a public forum in June.
Yep.
And it was-
It was much more respectful.
I think, but, but, but they're coming here, so we can have our police officer in the back, do what we did tonight.
I- So, um, pivoting off the Hamilton issue to something you said earlier, about whether compliance means compliance with three A or compliance with the guidelines. Um, i- if, there's nothing that prevents us from making multiple proposals, so if you think you have an alternative proposal-
Time, time is of the essence.
Well, other than time, but if, if you think you have an alternative proposal, you wanna float it says, look, I think we would comply with three A if we zoned for forty units, not seventy-five units, or whatever, District One, then put it out there, and, you know, there's not, we could, we could send multiple-
Yeah, I mean, you can, you can do it with, with, uh, twelve words or less, you can change section four to shall have no more than one principal building with more than eighteen residential units in MFOD one, and no more than two principal units with no more than thirty-six total in MFOD.
Would you have to show how that complies with the statute?
With what's reasonable.
So that wouldn't even comply with three A.
Why not?
Because the definition of a multifamily in one A is, contemplates more than one building.
Well, one principal building with eighteen units.
But, no, so in, so in-
Do we wanna do this a quarter to ten on a Thursday night?
I, I just wanted to put-
It's a great point, and, and the point, I think it, we-
No, no, I, I do that, but I-
I think Dave, if you wanna do that, that, y- there's nothing that stops you from working with Robyn, and then present it at our next meeting.
Yeah, and support, with support.
And my understanding of this is that it's not gonna comply with the guideline, like, we wouldn't be meeting what we've been talking about, which is seventy-five here and whatever here, but-
Guidelines, but, as long as it means-
Ju- just to clarify, so the statutory forty A definition of multifamily housing is a building with three or more residential dwelling units, or two or more buildings on the same lot with more than one residential unit in each building. That's statutory, that's not the guidelines, so-
You could do either one, you could do one unit, one building with someone-
Wait, wait, what's the section, what's the citation on that?
It's chapter forty A, section one A.
The definitions.
Ah.
So they have a statutory definition in one A of multifamily housing, which is what I just read.
More than one building.
So it's, three or more residential dwelling units, or two or more buildings on the same lot with more than one residential dwelling unit in each building.
Yeah, so what I said complies.
So your one thing complies.
No, because you have to allow one or the other, so if you say it has to be in one building, you take the-
With eighteen units.
You're taking away the or.[1636.64]